...2022 with this brand new board that you will have for at least the next two years. We welcome our new board members. Cannot wait to serve with you. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance because we have established a quorum. I believe we have two MMPS students, Atticus and Theodore Elrod. Would you please come to the front and lead us in the pledge? Community, would you please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mr. and Mr. Elrod. All right, it is the time we have all been waiting on. It has certainly been a pleasure to serve this board, this director and this community as board chair. I am not going to cry, but I have grown personally and professionally in ways that I did not expect to and sometimes didn't want to. So, thank you for allowing me to serve in that capacity. But it is time to elect a new board chairperson and a new board vice chairperson. Mrs. Elrod, it's been a pleasure to serve with you, Dr. Battle, you as well. Thank you all for pushing me and helping me to help guide this district. But with that, I will begin by accepting nominations for board chairperson. Mrs. Masters?
I nominate Rachel Anne Elrod.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have plenty of seconds. Any discussion? All right, all in favor on a new board chairperson, Mrs. Rachel Anne Elrod, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mrs. Elrod. With a vice chairman role open, we will now accept nominations for the vice chairman role. Dr. Berthina Nobah McKenney?
I make a motion for Frida Player to be vice chair.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor for Mrs. Frida Player to become our next vice chairperson, please raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, new board leadership. We are here to support you. If you will give us just a moment, we will do a changing of the guard.
Tennessee legislative representative.
My apologies, we do have just one more leadership role. We have a Tennessee legislator...
Representative.
Representative that will act as a bit of a liaison. We have a lot of work to do with this legislature. So, I will accept nominations for Tennessee legislator, legislative representative.
I nominate Ms. Emily Masters for the Tennessee legislative representative.
Thank you, Mrs. Tyler. Do we have a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, please raise your hand for Mrs. Masters. Motion passes, almost unanimously. Unanimously. Mrs. Masters, I believe you'll be working a bit more closely with Dr. Sevier as you have already been doing, and then when we have a legislative liaison, that will likely, you will be our current person. Thank you three for serving in this role. We will now shift seats. Mrs. Elrod, please take your place.
Please take your umbrella with you as your boarding gift. Excuse me while I move the words. I used to type my notes and now I, I used to write my notes, excuse me, now I type them. Before we continue with the agenda, I do have a couple of words. So, first, thank you to Ms. Bugs and thank you to my colleagues for their votes of support. I am deeply honored to hold this position and very excited about it. I am especially humbled to have everyone's support. That is so nice. So, yes, before we move on with the agenda, let me have these few thoughts. Half of us stood up for election on August the 4th, and I believe that tonight's vote is a continuation of what we loudly heard from Nashville's voters and our constituents, and that the city wants a school board that works together even when it's tough to move the ball forward, to make each MMPS school a place where Nashville's children can receive a high-quality equitable education that honors their humanity and prepares them to reach their full potential. As a board, we have a tremendous responsibility for that, both individually and collectively, and we need to work with that goal in mind, and I look forward to us all doing so. That is especially true as some at this state and even within our own city have worked to remove or replace our elected school leadership and/or overturn our responsibilities that are ours as an elected responsible, or it is a responsible elected person, excuse me. Yet, our elected school board and its wide breadth of work is vital to a public school system, and I am so proud of the one that I represent. It has been my privilege to serve with Chair Bugs the past two years as vice chair, and together we have proven, together, but a lot of Christian, once again, we have all grown so much, together we have proven that transparency, advocacy, reliability, expertise, and professionalism on the board invokes confidence and trust from our city, our families, our industries, and our community partners. This approach has helped lead MMPS to obtain more resources, make our teachers the highest paid. Our staff have received raises. We've had long-needed capital gains increase as well, and we have also have improved academic outcomes, which we're hearing from and hearing about tonight. And I love seeing this full room. But as my colleagues and I start our terms tonight, I want to be sure to point out that we are a woman-led MMPS Board of Education. And like our school system, and just like our school system, we have a majority of minority members, and I think that's important as well, that we represent the people that we serve. Both of these things...
Thank you.
Of course, it's Miss Linda. Of course, both of these things are not only unique to the state of Tennessee, but also across the country. Our director schools, our past chair, myself, we're all under the age of 40, and we all have children actively in the schools. We all on the board have busy family lives and professional lives. Yet, we have committed to public service, to leave our city better than we found it and to propel it forward with its future workforce, communities, and citizens in mind. It is our honor to be our city citizens that have elected to lead the schools and have trusted us, our neighbors have trusted us, excuse us, to be dedicated, ambitious, and discerning in this role. And it is my honor to serve with each of you as the true critical friends of Metro Nashville Public Schools. I am so proud to work with you. I know we have an incredible impact and so much work to do. And I have a number of things I'm sure you're so surprised by that I would like to implement, and some will even happen this week, because you know how I am. And so, I will be contacting a bunch of y'all this week about some things coming up and trying to prepare board retreats, and I look forward to all of it. And for our community at large and for so many of our staff that are here in the room, I vow to have improved communication and to focus on those. So, to focus on improved communication, visibility, advocacy, oh hey! To have a focus on improved communications, visibility, advocacy, oversight, transparency, leadership, and professionalism. I appreciate you've listened to these words. I am so, again, honored by your votes. I'm going to trust that I had Dr. Gentry as well with her incredible shirt. And I appreciate it. Now, so, onto that, let's have tonight's agenda. So, first, I would like to see a motion to either adopt or amend the agenda as it's listed.
I move to adopt the agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right. Well, we will probably get announcements. All right, the adoption of the agenda has been first and seconded. All in approval on the adoption of our agenda, please raise your hand. Thank you. That's unanimous? Nope. Cheryl, did you raise your hand? Oh, you did. Okay, thank you. And so, we will begin our evening with awards and recognitions. Dr. Battle?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. First to Ms. Bugs, thank you so much for the last few years in your leadership, serving as chair. Congratulations to you, Madam Chair, Rachel Anne Elrod. Serving as vice chair, we've already been working so closely together, so I'm looking forward to our continued partnership and collaboration. And also, congratulations to you, Vice Chair Frida Player. As budget chair, we've had lots and lots of advocacy conversations, so I look forward to our conversations and planning in your new role. And to all of our other board members, welcome. And I'm looking forward to a great discussion this evening and celebrating many of our leaders who are with us tonight. So, tonight, we have the pleasure of celebrating and honoring our schools for what they achieved in the 2021-22 school year on the state's accountability matrix. Before I jump into this, I want to remind you, just a few weeks and months ago, you heard me talk about just how challenging the 21-22 school year was as we were transitioning back into the in-person learning environment and kind of learning our way, but with a commitment, Abanese, to be better than normal. And so, I just want to kind of set that context before we start our recognitions tonight. So, first, MMPS as a whole has been designated an advancing school district by the Tennessee Department of Education based on our 21-22 TCAP results. That's the second highest rating a district can achieve in the state's accountability model. Now, I want to be clear, everyone played a part in this achievement. We must recognize our students, our teachers, our support staff, our principals, this board, our parents, the community, everyone who really helped keep the focus on our students where it needs to be and where it needs to continue to be. So, we did this all together. That's what's most important. And we did it in some very trying circumstances as we got, again, everyone back in the in-person learning environment, actually for the first time since the 2020 school year. So, let's just pause for a moment and give everyone a round of applause for a year of academic growth and achievement. Now, why I'm so proud of all the work of all of our learning communities, and we know that we're on a journey of continuous improvement, I want to take an opportunity to recognize the individual accomplishments of 34 of our schools. We have 34 district-run schools that achieve reward status, which is a record number in this district, including two that were previously on the priority schools list. That deserves a round of applause. We also have another four schools that also exited priority school status. Let's give it up for them as well. Tremendous work all across the board, and I'm honored to work alongside every leader and especially these leaders who are improving outcomes for our students. So, reward schools are the best of the best in the state of Tennessee after scoring in the top tiers of the state's accountability metrics. Now, this is not just about growth. It factors in TCAP achievement scores, growth scores, chronic absence, English learner proficiency, graduation rates, and ready graduate metrics depending on the grade tier of the school. And not only do we have a tremendous number of schools performing at the top level, but for the first time ever, MMPS has fewer priority schools than the last time the list was run. Y'all, we're going to clap a lot tonight. We have to make sure this is hard, complex work, and we've got to celebrate the successes of our students and our school communities. Moving out of priority status is a major achievement that these principals can be proud of. But most importantly, it means better results for our students. Principals who are here, as I call your school's name, please come up proudly. Come up near the podium, and then we'll gather for some photos up here in the front of the board table, but we want to individually recognize you and your school communities. First, I want to recognize four of the schools that exited priority school status. When I call your name, please come on up. Alex Green Elementary. Up to the podium. Cumberland Elementary. McMurray Middle School. And Robert Churchwell Elementary. All right, principals, if you can come up this way through the little gate, we're going to take a quick picture of you.
It's going to be quick.
Yes, it's going to be quick. Okay, you got three schools. See? And board members who represent these schools, please join us.
Well, Churchwell is mine now.
All right, so congratulations to each of these schools, and thank you for everything you're doing every day on behalf of students. And I can just attest that everything is in service to our students. Now, we also have two schools that not only exited priority status, but also jumped all the way to the top, y'all, to reward status, which is not seen very often. This reflects great focus, intentionality, leadership, teamwork on the part of everyone at these two schools on behalf of their students. So, I would like to recognize at this time, two of our fabulous schools that exited priority status and entered reward school status. They are Amquie Elementary School. And Warner Elementary School. Now, Principal Cobb and Principal Gibbs, y'all have to stay there for a moment, right? Two recognitions, so you got to stay there. As we call up and acknowledge all of our other reward schools today, and then we'll take a big photo. So, along with Amquie and Warner, I'm also thrilled to recognize 32 more schools for being named reward schools for the 21-22 school year. Again, these schools are among the best of the best in the state of Tennessee based on their student outcomes, and it's an extremely impressive achievement for each one of them. And I will also share that in this, the multiple conversations I've had, they've all said, and this is not the end, it is only the beginning of the outcomes that we will achieve for our students. So, let's get this started with Charlotte Park Elementary School. Cole Elementary. Pre-Cole Elementary. There you go, Nate. Dan Mills Elementary. Scottson Elementary. Aiken Elementary. Early College High School. Y'all shake out your hands for just a moment. We got a ways to go. Fall Hamilton Elementary. Glendale Elementary. Land Gary Elementary. Grand Berry Elementary. Prophet Valley Elementary. Head Middle. Hume Fog High School. Isaac Litten Middle. J.E. Moss Elementary. All right, I know we still got good energy. Jolton Elementary. John B. Wisset Elementary. J.T. Moore Middle. Julia Green Elementary. Lakeview Elementary. Lockland Elementary. Martin Luther King Junior High School. Elementary. Meg's Middle. I'm not done yet. Neely's Ben Elementary. Old Center Elementary. Percy Priest Elementary. Rose Park Middle. Sylvan Park Elementary. Yuna Elementary. And the West End Middle. Everyone, I think they deserve a standing ovation. Need to grab a big, a big reward school photo, so if y'all can come up front. Board members, if you can join us, we'll snap a quick picture and allow these leaders to keep leading.
So, we might just stand in our seat.
You all are the heroes. You don't show up.
I love it. Listen, I'm going to show up on Friday for your celebration.
All right, so I'm coming off script just a little bit. If we have any teachers or staff that represent any of the 34 schools that were just represented, can we get you to the front for a quick picture? Any staff members, teachers? All right, ladies, y'all ready with the spare fingers again?
Let's do it.
All right, we're ready?
Yep, yep, yep.
One, two, three.
Go teacher, go staff, go primary. So, congratulations again to all the schools that exited priority status, entered into reward status, or two that moved from priority to reward. For every school community, for every teacher, team, support member, if you're part of Team MMPS, parents, everyone, this entire community, thank you because a Level 5 district and achieving district does not happen, advancing district does not happen by chance. It happens by design, and we appreciate all of your support and your focus as we're in relentless pursuit of making sure that every MMPS student is known. So, thank you again, and Madam Cheryl, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Do you want to do the director's report now?
Sure.
Okay. Let's do the director's report then.
All right, so we're going to move directly into our director's report. Lots of celebrations, again, of the successes of our students as a result of the hard work of our fabulous team. We also know that there's still a lot of work to be done, and we're committing and recommitting every day to make sure that our students have what they deserve. And so, our work will continue. This is only the beginning for Metro Nashville Public Schools. We expect to be in this space year after year to ensure that every student is where they need to be and where their talents are sure to take them. We want to make sure we're supporting them on their journey towards success. Again, congratulations, Chair, Vice Chair. Welcome back. Board Member Mays and Berthina Nobah McKenney, welcome. Board Member Hera Block, it is so good to be with you and engaging in our first director's report this evening. All board members, again, it's so good to see you. So, now, before we get into our presentation in just a moment around accountability, because we, again, we just did a lot of celebrating. We have our commitment to where we are and where we need to be. We want to dig a little bit into what this accountability means. How did we arrive at being an advancing district? How did the... How did these schools arrive at advancing? And what is it going to take to continue to reduce the number of priority schools that we have? Before I jump in, I do want to give a quick COVID update to the board. Last week, we had 77 students who were confirmed positive, which is down from 176 the week before and 422 the week before that. The number of staff cases was at 37 last week. That number was 38 the week before and 110 before that. So the trend lines have been moving in the right direction in terms of cases in schools, and like always, we'll continue to update and provide information as necessary. But it brings me great honor and pleasure to ask a few of our leaders to approach the podium to walk us through the accountability data that, again, we've been communicating and celebrating. Paul Changis, Tina Stinson, as they're coming up, I just want to take another opportunity to thank Paul for all of his leadership and work in the accountability assessment, the research space for many, many years. Paul has stood with us, beside us, delivering, you know, news that wasn't always as positive as what we're celebrating today. And, you know, he and I have talked as he has retired, but then kind of came back to help us, that, you know, this is, this is what it's all about. Paul has been pushing to make sure that the needle is moving in the right direction for MMPS students. In fact, it's just been a dream come true to work so closely with him and digging into the data. And quite frankly, sometimes we just need to listen to Paul, right? Because he can see and tell what's happening. And it just brings me great pleasure, Paul, to have you here with us this evening to share this accountability update and your last year in official role as Executive Officer of Research Assessment and Evaluation in Metro National Public Schools. So let me say congratulations to you. Thank you for all your leadership and direction and support you've provided to myself, my cabinet, the principals, the leaders all across this district to get to where we are today. And also welcome to Tina, who will be transitioning, who has transitioned into our Director of Research Assessment and Evaluation. You all are a dynamic duo, a great team, and I just could not be more thankful for the wisdom and the expertise that you have provided to this district. So y'all, help me welcome Paul Changis and Tina Stinson to the podium.
Thank you, Dr. Battle, Chair Elrod, and members of the board. I'm not sure I can live up to that introduction, but I will be happy to lead off the presentation and then hand it over to Dr. Stinson, who is the real expert on state accountability and has been my right hand for many years. This is my 25th year of reporting assessment or accountability data to the district. And I'll be honest, some years have been easier than others. I am happy to be here tonight to talk about good news that we have. It may be a little anticlimactic after the rewards ceremony we had, but we're going to dig into the state accountability system a little bit. And hopefully, by the end of the session, you'll know a little bit more about how these accountability systems work and the measures that go into them. And I'll say right up front, it is a rather complex accountability system. But the good news, and you can't do an overview without getting into the weeds a little bit, but we will try to keep it from going too deep into those weeds. One thing you will come away with is the idea that it really is based on multiple measures, though, and that's a good thing. We don't want to be held accountable just based on one test or one set of measures. As Dr. Battle has announced previously, the district moved into advancing status this year, the second of the five categories that this state assigns to districts. This is based on an overall score across multiple measures, and we'll go into those measures in just a minute. This is the latest of a series of good news that we've been able to share this year in terms of how our students are bouncing back since the start of the pandemic. As you probably remember, we did quite well in terms of the improvement we saw in our district benchmarks last year, including in the spring. Then we saw TCAP scores for proficiency that significantly improved from, from the previous year. And in fact, were higher in improvement than we saw statewide. And we just recently received our value-added scores, which gave the district the five on its one-to-five scale. And I haven't even shared this with Dr. Battle because I just discovered it today, but our value-added scores for ELA in mathematics for across grades four through eight were in the top 10 in the state in both subject areas. So as I said, the positive about the accountability system is that it does use multiple measures. We have achievement and growth measures based on our TCAP achievement test. We look at what we call success rate. This is our proficiency in English Language Arts and Mathematics across grade spans. For elementary, the state uses three through five. Middle school, six through eight. High schools, nine through 12. They, they look at both our overall achievement and the progress that's made in terms of achievement. But we also average those in as we'll get into a little more detail with our value-added growth measures. And that value-added looks at how individual students make progress from year to year in, in terms of growth relative to the state. We also have measures for chronic, chronically absent students. And to be chronically absent, a student misses 10 or more percent of days that they're enrolled. And both in terms of the absolute percentage and the improvement in that percentage, there are, there are scores assigned to districts. And in fact, for each of these indicators, the state assigns a score from zero to four, and we'll, we'll look at an example of that. For English language proficiency, that's how our English learner students do on English language proficiency assessments. For, for this, for the state of Tennessee, they use the WIDA Access Assessment. And each student has a target, a goal expectation based on what's happened in past years in terms of students at that, at that proficiency level and the improvement they've made from year to year. And we're held accountable based on the percentage of students that, that meet their expectation. And then we have graduation rate is another indicator for high schools, but also our ready graduates. Not just that they graduate, but that they graduate with indications, evidence that they are college career-ready. It could be based on an ACT score or other early, early indicators of, of success. And, and we'll get into those in a little more detail, what those indicators are. But again, each of these measures is going to be weighted on a four-point scale. And I will say, too, that we will, as we will, we look at this based on all students and what we call our historically underserved student populations. Each of those indicators, we saw calculations are made for each of those measures for our Black, Hispanic, and Native American students, for economically disadvantaged English learner students with disabilities. These are the subgroups that historically in Tennessee have fallen below the state average in terms of test scores. And I'm going to go over one example of an indicator. This is our student achievement indicator based on TCAP scores. And on the far left, you see the zero-to-four scale for this indicator. This is for each of our tiers. There's an absolute performance scale. What percent of students were proficient on these exams in English Language Arts and Mathematics? For instance, a school that had over 45% of their students that hit that proficiency mark, and again, that's meeting or exceeding expectations on those TCAP tests, they would get four points for that. If they fall between 35% and 45%, they get three points and so forth, as you see. And no points awarded if they fall below 20%. That's a one-time measure of, of student achievement, an absolute performance measure. But they also, the state also looks at what progress they've made from the prior year. The state sets what we call annual measurable objectives, or AMOs. Based on your prior year performance, there's a very ambitious formula that's used in terms of setting a target for improvement. And how you do in terms of hitting that target determines the score you receive. If you hit the target, you're going to get at least three points. If you improve at a rate that's, and again, it's a very challenging target. But if you hit a target that's even twice that in terms of improvement, you are looking at a four-point score for AMO. If you don't hit the AMO, but you come within the confidence interval, and that's just saying that we know that there's measurement error around this, but you're not significantly far from the AMO, you're going to get two points. If you're at least within the measurable error range of where you were the prior year, one point, and if you fall below that, in other words, you moved in the wrong direction, you get zero points. And the state accountability system takes the higher of the two measures for absolute performance in AMO in terms of establishing your score for, for achievement. But that's also averaged in with our value-added or growth score. And as I said earlier, there's, the state has a one-to-five scale where three represents academic growth, which is equal to the, the state average, and five being a score that shows that there's significant evidence that you have exceeded the state. For, for a Level V, you would get four points, and so on down the scale. And so all of that is computed, again, for each of those student groups that we were talking about. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Stinson to go into an example and also to, to look at the rest of the accountability system and results.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Changis. So the next thing we're going to look at is one actual example for one indicator for one student group. And that is the all students, which is considered a student group. What you're looking at is the success rate, which can be thought of as a weighted average of meeting or exceeding expectations. These are our actual data for one of our tiers. This is the six-through-eight tier. It comes very much like this, though, if you can believe it, just a little more cryptic than it, than it looks like up there. We have the success rate that we made, which is a 22.5%. Again, across reading and math and the equivalent subjects in high school. Then the next line you'll see is the confidence interval bound. That's, as Dr. Changis explained, an accounting of the measurement error, which means if we did this 100 times, 95% of the time, we'd get between a 22 and a 23. So that's the upper bound of that confidence interval. Next, you see the success rate in 2021. That was 14.1%. So you can see the huge leap that we made from 2021 to 2022. Then you see our target. It's called AMO target for annual measurable objective. I know, it's very exciting. The annual measurable objective is targets that the state sets, ambitious but achievable. I think his block knows that, that language. Basically meant to move our students up. The way AMOs are set, the lower you are, the more improvement you have to make to hit this annual measurable achievement. Then there's the double, which is an even more rigorous standard, very hard to make. Then, as Dr. Changis mentioned, you get points for the absolute pathway. In this case, we earned one point. However, we earned three points, which would be equivalent to a B if the state were giving letter grades this year, which they, they decided not to, on the AMO pathway. Because we hit that, we actually exceeded that AMO quite a bit. They take the higher of those two, so a three, for that piece of the district accountability for this subgroup. Then there's the value added. We hit a Level V for this grade range even. That earns four points or an A. And then you average that A and that B, or that one and that three, and you come up with 3.5, which is an A for this overall indicator for this, for this grade level, for this student group, okay? So we go and we do that for all of those measures that Dr. Changis showed you for every one of the subgroups. And it comes up like this on my screen. It's very dark. It made me nervous. This is the state's actual look at this. You can take a look and see which ones we earned. Three's on, four's on, and so on for each of the various indicators. Then this is just for the all students subgroup. So all students earns its own little grade, which was advancing in this case because it was, you know, they, they did a weighted average of each of these, each of these indicators for this group. And then they do the same thing for each subgroup or each student group. And each of them get, each student group gets a score for each of the indicators, and they come up with a sub, a student group status, which was also advancing, but slightly lower at 2.25. So, you know, just a little lower in the range, but still advancing. And then they take this at 40% of an overall grade and the all students group at 60% of the grade and give us our final accountability status, which was advancing because of our overall score, which you can see. So with this, I'm going to switch over into school-level accountability, which uses mostly this, it uses exactly the same measures, but they're weighted differently. So it's not exactly the same. All stu, schools, I think Dr. Battle mentioned this earlier. We have achievement, which is that success rate. So if you hear me go back and forth, I'm sorry. That's because the state does that, and I just got used to talking about it that way. Growth, which is our value-added. Chronically out of school, again, 10% or more of enrolled days. And the English language proficiency assessment. High schools also have graduation rate. That's worth 5% of the points. But ready graduates is worth a good chunk more than that. And that's graduates with a 21 ACT or four early post-secondary opportunities or two post-secondary opportunities plus earning a credential. And you'll hear a little bit today, I think later, about some of these credentials and the good news we have there. They weight all of those metrics and come up with an overall grade. It's very much like what you would do as a teacher. You know, achievement is worth 40% of your grade, and growth is worth 30% of your grade. And, and they do that, again, for every one of the student subgroups mentioned before, student groups mentioned before, and come up with an overall grade. 3.1 or higher is a reward school. It used to be different. I've gotten a lot of questions. You used to make it for growth or achievement. Now it's just this overall grade. And that's how all those schools that you saw coming up here earned their reward school status. This is a list of them again, both district-run and charter-run. And you can see the, the large number. And I wanted to point out that last time, we had 37 schools, eight of whom, eight of which were charters. This is 48 right now. But we'd also want to share the less good news, but we think we're going to get good news by the end of the year with schools that have earned status other than reward. And we're going to go a little bit into that. And we're going to go a little bit into that. Priority schools. Priority schools are the 5% of schools with the lowest success rates. Typically, we use three years of data. So it's your weighted average of reading and math across three years. This time, it was two because of the pandemic. So it was 2019 and 2022 were averaged together that don't earn a Level IV or V T-VAS in the most recent two years. There's two pools for priority status, high school or K to eight. And high schools who have a graduation rate below 67% are also designated as priority schools. So this is just the success rate. In this case, they don't look at your attendance. They don't look at your growth, except for this safe harbor of T-VAS in the last two years. So it's just absolute one-time measure of achievement. And here's our 2022 priority school list. You can see the newly added priority schools, including the one, the new charter school we have in priority status. This is fewer priority schools than we had last time. We had 23 in the past, priority and comprehensive support. So, and this year, because of the pandemic and the recovery from the pandemic, this is a one-year instead of a three-year status. So at the end of 2023, they're going to recalculate this with 2019, 22, and 23 data. So we're going to be pushing hard to get every one of these schools off this list as we go forward. Both at the time of new priority school rankings and between those times, at the end of the year, we can exit schools from priority. So obviously, some of the ones that Dr. Battle mentioned before exited because they weren't on the next priority list. But also, if a school exceeds the 10th percentile in the state for two years in a row, they can exit priority status. We had Rosebank exit in this way. Was it last year or the year before? Last year. Or you can exceed 15th percentile in the state based on the success rate for one year. Or you can earn a Level IV or V T-VAS in all the content areas for two consecutive years. So we know that we have some priority schools that can make it this way. If the priority status was due to underperforming subgroups, and I'll get into how that happens in a moment, the schools can exit by meeting AMO targets for that subgroup for two years. And similarly with graduation rate, you can leave if you get your grad rate up. So here's our list of priority exits. Stars are the reward schools that we celebrated a few minutes ago. Next, we're going to talk a little bit about focus schools. And there's two kinds of focus schools. The first is called targeted support and improvement. And those are schools whose overall accountability scores for a given student group are in the bottom 5% for one year. Again, that's for all the measures put together. Attendance, English language proficiency, graduation rate, if you have it, growth, and achievement. For this, they also give us racial, ethnic subgroups to look at, as well as the accountability groups that go into the district and most of the school-level accountability. So each of them is broken out and given an overall grade on that zero-to-four scale. We only have four TSI schools. And in my notes, if I can find them, I have how many we had before. But this is a very low number of schools. And AZ Kelly, for example, as I mentioned, it's the bottom 5% in the state. AZ Kelly earned a B for their Asian subgroup, and that was the lowest 5% in the state. So it doesn't necessarily mean these schools are doing poorly with the student groups that they're identified for. It can be just an accident of luck. You can also not be on this list if you get an A or a B in every single one of those areas. So they had a C in one area and landed here. This is a one-year status. We don't expect that these schools will be on this list for the next year. Several of these, not these schools. If you are a TSI school, you can also become an ATS I school. And ATS I stands for Additional Targeted Support and Improvement. So only schools identified in that bottom 5% for all measures are ranked for ATS I identification. And what they do then is look strictly at the success rate. And if that success rate, that average percent meeting or exceeding expectations is below the rate at which you become a priority school, then you get the ATS I designation. So they're not ranking English learners against English learners at that point. They're ranking English learners against the bottom 5% for all students, right? So it can be very difficult to stay out of this status if you have a particularly underserved set of students. If a school is on the ATS I list for two cycles for the same subset of students, they will become priority schools. But that is not starting until that cycle will start on the 22-23 identification. It's been in place. We just have never had enough data to actually do this. Here are our ATS I schools. There are only five of them. Again, we are much lower than we were in the past. This is a very low number of schools, and we are very proud of that. And you can see the subgroups for which the schools are identified. Again, this is a one-year rate this time. It would be three years. So we have high hopes that these schools will not show up on this list next year. These schools do have occasionally another TSI subgroup. However, you take whatever the lowest status is for state accountability. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Dr. Battle and step back from the podium.
Yes, thank you, Paul. Thank you, Tina. That was a pretty simple process moment. Yeah, so again, we definitely rely on their expertise and coaching and guidance for executive directors and our principals. And I just want to close with, like, we know a lot about the successes we've had as a district. We know where we need to double down. I think on this slide, you just see some of the things that did happen, particularly last school year, that we're continuing to deepen our practice around the in-person learning environment. We know strategies around our Tier One instruction. We know how to appropriately intervene. You could also imagine, particularly with our priority schools, our ATS I and our TSI schools, because of specific needs, we know exactly what we will be doing in targeting those student groups to make sure that we have intentionality around their education daily. We know how important our teachers and our staff and our principals are to our students. You cannot replace their ability to really pour into our students, to personalize their learning, to be responsive to their needs. I do want to point out two specific things in the data. One, around a chronic absenteeism. Just for context, just reminding us that at the start of the 21-22 school year, particularly with response to the pandemic, there was a 10-day quarantine, right? And, or isolation. I might get my terms mixed up at this point. We've been talking about it for three years. But if you think back to the definition of chronic absenteeism, that's 10 days, right? And so we know that we've got to be very intentional about this. We move forward, the second semester, a little ways through, it changed to five days. But we know that there were some disruptions caused by that while we had a leeway system in place last school year. It still took a response from student and family in order for us to document it in that way and action as students were home recovering from COVID. So I just want to acknowledge that. I also want to point out that state law has changed this year. So we have even more, even less, excuse me, flexibility with regards to how we document students who might be out due to COVID. So I want to acknowledge that. I also want to acknowledge, if you were digging into our data, particularly the growth for our English learners was significant last school year. And again, I'm very thankful to all of our teams, the EL team, again, just plugging in and being responsive. We know our student groups. We know where we've had significant progress. We know the areas that we need to continue to double down around as we move throughout this upcoming school year. And so we are shifting as we move forward. With our Schools of Innovation, our newly named priority schools, they will stay where they are. They will not be shifting structure this year because it is our expectation with this one-year pool that those schools will be exiting back off of the priority school list. But we will have targeted supports in place for those schools. So I will pause there, Madam Chair, for just a moment to see if there's any questions for this team. And as they're finalizing and responding to the final questions, if you may have them, I'm going to ask Jennifer Bell, our Director of Academies of Nashville, to come and start preparing for update, a brief update around the Academies of Nashville.
Thank you for that update. As you know, colleagues, but as some of you may not know, remember that all questions are to be directed to Dr. Battle, though she may have staff that answer your questions. So if you have any questions or concerns, please let me know. All right. Frida, will you go ahead first?
So this is a technical question. So for priority school status, so no matter what, there's always going to be priority school because it's not, it's not a threshold. So like, if, let's say we're all Olympians, and three of us came first, second, third, and the rest of us came in, but we're still in the top 10 in the world, we would put priority status because we're in the bottom half. Like, is that a good analogy? That it's not a threshold that you have to clear, like, a mile and four minutes? No matter if you do clear the mile and four minutes, if you're bottom of the four minutes, it doesn't matter?
There will always be priority schools.
Okay. That's my question.
Thank you. Ms. Bugs?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Dr. Battle, you know, I've been talking to you about just different narratives in the community, making sure that the community not only understands what these different terms mean, but they understand how they can tap in and support. You know, we've been working with Pencil. We've been working with other organizations, parent groups. I talked to you about looking at the top-performing schools to understand what kind of community support do they have, whether it's school-support organizations, PTOs, fundraising capacity. Is that something that this team can work on? Because I think it's something that we, as a board, could kind of take on, to take to the community and say, "Look, our schools as a whole are thriving. But when you look at the top-performing schools, look at how much they fundraised. Look at how many volunteers they have on a yearly basis. Look at how long their PTO has been standing." Those are the kind of things that I think I will take on now that I'm no longer in leadership with your blessing, both Madam Chair and Dr. Battle. Any thoughts there? Is there somewhere, something that I should be looking towards, someone that I could be working with in the community?
Yeah, so two quick things. Yes, we can provide that information to all board members for your respective district schools. The second thing is, we do have some very specific data that you'll hear a little bit about when you hear our Academies of Nashville presentation with our academies model and the business and community investment in our schools, which have a direct correlation to where we are with performance with those particular schools. But that is something that we can provide and share. We welcome partnership. I think I've shared this on multiple occasions. Early on in my career as a professional educator, I learned you cannot do this alone. As an aspiring educator, I wanted to just jump in there and get everything done all at one time. And you learn very quickly, year one, that you need that continued support from home to school, school to home, the community. So I'd be happy to partner with you in that way and provide that relevant data to all of our board members.
Thank you so much for supporting that effort. But last question, Madam Chair, if you don't mind. When we look at elementary schools that are underperforming, many of them are seeing students come in with foundational skills that have not been established. They need different supports in their community or in their home. It's not quite an MMPS. It's not something that's on our job requirement. You know, how do you make sure that a child, as soon as they are born, before they come into MMPS, that they have supports? How do we, as a community, how do we, as a school system, begin to look toward making sure that when that first grader, who's already a grade level behind, comes into our school, how do we support them? And are there ways, are there things you think we, as a community, can be doing to support them even before they come to us? Very loaded question, I know.
Yeah, no, it's timely. Right now, our early, our pre-K, early learning team is digging into some data and creating a plan that I am excited to bring before this board sometime in the near future, just addressing the entry point and level of our students and how we might intervene early. I think, you know, just historically, we've been in the K or pre-K-12 space. I think realistically, as we're talking about continuing to move the needle for our students, we have to pay attention to the early childhood space as well and looking at those partnerships with the Blue Piranha United Way, other partners who have already been in this work, how we're leveraging the Imagine, Imagination Library.
Tom, pardon?
Yes. Those resources in our community, forgive me. And so we are, I'm very proud of our team who's leading that work. And I'm looking for David Williams and Mason. They've been putting their heads together over the last few months to year around how we might intervene and support early to make sure, or to kind of guarantee our students are set up for success at that point of entry into Metro National Public Schools. So stay tuned for that. We'll be bringing that before the board again in the near future.
That is phenomenal. I do just want to elevate that that's not something that MMPS was necessarily called to do. So the idea that you and your team are already looking at what happens as soon as a child is born, how they come to us, will be the game changer for our school. We are the youth focus for Nashville, so I appreciate this. Thank you.
And if I can just add, we have to. And it will be a call on the community to really rally around us and support us in this effort. We cannot wait. Particularly, we have a lot of conversations about third-grade literacy. We cannot wait to third grade. We cannot wait to kindergarten and even pre-K. We've got to make sure that the supports are in our community early and that we're supporting our families in preparation for the pre-K 12 experience.
Thank you. Ms. Masters?
Thank you. I just, I have a clarifying question about determining priority school status. So priority schools are identified by pool, K through eight, and high school. So does this mean that all K through eight are lumped together? Okay, so that might explain why there are so many middle schools in priority status. I mean, they're being compared to elementary schools. Got it. Okay. My second question is around when a charter school moves into priority status and what sort of steps we are to take as a district.
Yeah, thank you for your question. So, Renita Perry, if you don't mind approaching the podium to respond to that. This is, this might be a first for us in my recollection that we've had a charter school be designated as a priority school. And so to Ms. Masters' questions, what by law, by our own administrative procedures and policies, does that require for us to respond to?
Yes, thank you for this opportunity to speak. So currently, we're in a situation in our MMPS Authorization Handbook. It states that we will recommend revocation for that charter school. It is in accordance with the state board policy that say that we may do so as well.
All right, and if, just to expand upon the definition, according to state policy, technically, a charter school cannot operate as a priority school.
No, ma'am, it cannot.
So is any action needed on the part of the board to?
So no action is needed tonight. So no action is needed tonight. I just want to call out that the embargo around accountability data was just lifted yesterday. And so we had to do a number of notifications and updates. And so our team will be continuing to pull together the necessary information for this board to consider, and we'll bring that before you at a later date.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tyler?
Yes, so I may have missed this, but I just wanted to check. For a chronically out of school, does, whether or not it's excused or unexcused, does that make, does not make a difference? Is that correct?
Does not make a difference.
Okay.
And let me repeat that for my team to confirm. Chronically absenteeism, it is excused and un, excused and unexcused absences?
It is. For accountability, one thing I failed to mention is that the student does need to be enrolled for at least half the year.
That was going to be my next question. So we have a population who are really highly transitory. And how is that impacting our chronic absenteeism? And sometimes they do not withdraw, even if they're moving to another county, and we don't know about it till later. What is in place for us to make sure that we're trying to do our best to capture that information and present it accurately?
Yeah, our team has been digging into that as well. We're actually going to put some extra layers in place to help try to track down that information. I mean, and you call out chronic absenteeism. We're also seeing that impact graduation rates as well. And so, and in one particular community where we have a higher transient population, particularly relocating out of the country, it makes it very difficult for the school team to document and have the proper documentation to either withdraw or appeal those students' particular data. And so we have strong processes in place in our enrollment centers, but it is, it's just difficult, particularly when you're relocating out of state, out of country, which tends to be representative of a higher number, a higher population of our students.
So if a student decides, or if a family of a student needs to leave and they go somewhere else and they forget to withdraw, or they do not turn in that paperwork, or they don't let us know for whatever reason, do we have the ability to kind of backdate to when they left so that we are being accurate with our data?
We do have the ability to do that. Team, feel free to chime in if needed. We do have the opportunity to backfill. If the process works well, which we don't have a lot of control over, the receiving school should send a request to the school that the child is coming from so that we have proper documentation and so that we can also release records. It does not always happen that way, but that is what should happen in that process. And so we try to follow up. I mean, you can imagine, we call, we email, we home visit, we search social media, we try to find where our students are when they're not present in our schools. And I'll yield for a moment to see if Tina Paul Moore, if anybody wants to add anything to that process.
On the dropout front, that becomes greatly difficult, not just on the backend. So a student leaves, once they've been gone for 10 days and we, you know, we withdraw them, it can be hard to find somebody. We can take affidavits and things like that. We have to prove every single student who has left the district has enrolled somewhere else. However, when students also, when students come to us, if they have not been enrolled in a Tennessee school before, and they come at the age of 16 or 17 and they leave, those are our absences and those are our dropouts. There is absolutely nothing we can do. We can say they came from Mexico, they were here for two weeks, they left. That's a dropout right there. And I did just want to add with the chronic absenteeism for the last year, needless to say, schools were allowing a lot of grace to students who were either sick themselves or who had sick family members and had to take care of their siblings. And I believe that it does explain a lot of the chronic absenteeism on top of, you know, the CDC recommendations. So we might not have dropped a student that we would have dropped in a prior year earlier. So like, they might have had 15 days absent instead of 10.
Yeah, yeah. And just to reiterate, chronic absenteeism, 10% of the school year absent, whether it is excused or unexcused.
I appreciate the clarity around that. And then I had another question about our additional targeted support in improvement schools. So you mentioned that sometimes one, a school could have more than one TSI and that they look for the lowest. If we have a school who would exit based on their lowest group, but their next lowest group would remain, how does that work?
So TSI, that's the Targeted Support, that is run every single year. So they won't go to the next lowest group. What they are doing is looking at, the school takes the lowest designation is what I meant to say.
That makes sense. Got it.
So even one of our priority schools would have been a B school this year, right? So, but they can't be a B school because they're a priority school, right? Which is why it's so important that people understand and are able to speak to their data at the schools for recruiting, because it doesn't mean the school is not a good school for your child.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, that's what I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Gentry?
Thank you so much, and thank you to my colleagues for the questions that have already been answered. I do want to go back to the, the chronic absenteeism. Dr. Battle, if I recall correctly, at some point prior to the world falling apart, we were doing better. We'd done, we had a concentrated effort and activities around addressing chronic absenteeism, especially around the groups, the student groups that are reflected in here. And so do we believe that those strategies, once re-employed, will show a difference in the data? I know we'll still have the five days and some of that, but are we thinking that those strategies are still effective?
Yeah, I think we're extremely clear on the strategies that help bolster attendance of our students and to decrease the level of chronic absenteeism. What we're still monitoring is the impact of the pandemic, of COVID on our students. So that is still something we're navigating, but do we know the strategies that help improve and help support families around attendance? We're clear on that. In fact, a few years ago, when we had a number of schools exit priority school status, one of the things that we consistently saw was their community achieves model and that support around attendance as a specific pillar of success. And so we know the levers to pull on for attendance. Again, we're having to keep a close monitor on how that five-day absence is having an impact on overall chronic absenteeism.
And just for clarity, and make sure I understood it correctly, if a student just stopped showing up, and I'm able to confirm that that student has transferred, then can I retrofit that date back to the last time I saw them in school?
Yes, you can.
Okay. So I can, I can clear that up. And just to go back to Ms. Bugs' comments, I mean, I've also had several schools, and I look at the priority schools list, and some of those are parents of those schools that are reaching out, wanting PTOs, wanting to get involved and wanting to partner. Just want to, and Ms. Bugs knows this really well, she's been doing some really good meetings in 37208, and the outcomes of that have been very obvious. So I would love to work with you to see how we package that and toolkit it, you know, that's, that's my favorite word these days, how we toolkit it and make it something manageable. I think, and I'll, just to be transparent, whether it's right, wrong, or indifferent, the, the thought and the messaging is that there's school-level resistance to the establishment of a PTO. And so we just need to figure out what's the expectation. And again, I do believe that Ms. Bugs' request of what's the secret sauce? What are those factors or elements that exist consistently across the schools that are doing well, are exiting priority status, exiting from priority straight to reward specifically? What's, what are the elements that are, that exist in that building? You know, is it high parental engagement? Is it partnerships? What is it that exists there? We may not be able to do the Paul Changis job of determining correlation and causality, but, but we know that something about that is making a difference. So I look forward to seeing that as well and just finding a way to come up with some, maybe, we did a lot of this during the pandemic, right? Many of those Facebook, we would go live on Facebook and do presentations. Dr. Nava McKinney was a part of that as well, and inform families about things during that time period. I think we can go back and use that same strategy to talk about those factors that have made a difference, or that we believe make a difference in student outcomes.
Now, thank you for that, Dr. Gentry. One of our signature initiatives is around our inquiries and the evaluation, particularly with our work with peer in partnership with Vanderbilt, evaluating how particular programs, strategies, efforts are correlating to student outcomes. So I look forward to sharing some, some more updates with the board around that. I know just recently, we shared some data around one particular strategy and the correlation for those cohort of students and their outcomes. So we are trying to ramp up with those evaluations, and we will port that information out as quickly as we can.
Along the same lines, and I'm, I love this conversation around what kinds of things we can discover around particular schools that are having success. And certainly, you know, from a variety of research, we know that some of the things that Ms. Bugs and Dr. Gentry have named are the case. But, and I'm curious to know if there's an effort maybe with peer or that within the Research Evaluation Office, also to look at a similar thing but around the growth, so just the Level 5 status or overall growth, if there are things we can learn about schools that have consistently grown sort of over a number of years and the types of, of efforts that they have in place, whether these things have to do with consistent leadership or teachers or support organizations. I think that could be, I'd be really curious just to know what we can know, because as you look at some of the, the data and what I think, you know, as we see people moving out of status, often growth is a big part of that and value-added growth is a big part of that, and being able to try and replicate that across schools will be really important as well.
Yeah, and I think, you know, and I'm kind of channeling my team right now, there's no silver bullet, right? We know, with intentionality, however, you can grow your students and increase the level of achievement or success rate. The one thing that we are really strengthening our structures and, and kind of weaving throughout our leadership framework is drilling down to the individual student data. And this speaks to our every student known. If we sit just with where the district is or where a school is, we'll continue to either miss the mark or make just incremental growth. It is imperative that we drill down to the individual student data. That is what's going to inform us most around how to intervene, how to support, how to inspire our students even, around the goals that we have set for them. And so we're spending a tremendous amount of time around our structures, our practices, building our toolbox to respond to the individual needs of our students. And there are going to be some efforts, when you talk about your Tier 1 instruction, that should be accessible for all students, but we've got to know our students well enough to know when we need to shift, when we need to accelerate, when we need to, you know, kind of reset based upon where they are. And so I just want to share that, just kind of level-setting that conversation, that any, there's no silver bullet, there's not one-way approach to get every student where they need to be. We have to know our students well. That's why our mantra is every student known. That is what I press upon, that is what I look for, that is what I ask about when I'm looking at school plans, when I'm visiting schools. How are we ensuring that every student is known? What is the, those planning structures look like? How do we provide feedback to our students? How are we getting those navigators connected to our students so that we know them and that we can, again, by design, create a system that works for them and support them as well?
Dr. Gentry?
And I'm, I'm sorry to double back, but, so I don't see in this list our, several of our other models of schools, right? So our, the ALCs are not on here. And I'm just wondering if we can, at some point, get a presentation of those schools that we don't talk about a lot, right? So our ALCs, the Opera Mills Academies, and things of that nature. I would just love to see how we're serving those students, if the every student known model is reaching them, and if it's not, where are the opportunities that still remain for that population of students?
We can absolutely do that. And we're going to kick off tonight talking about our Academies of Nashville and that model that exists in our high schools, many of which you don't see represented in this data tonight, but we have a strong national model around what we're doing to accelerate their outcomes.
Dr. Pathina, you have a question?
Dr. Battle, I have a quick question. You touched upon real briefly that the state law has changed related to protocols around COVID. Can you explain what those changes are and what the limits are and how that will impact also our chronic absenteeism and the discussions we've been having recently?
Yeah, some of the, two of the particular laws that have sunset is our students' ability to learn in the virtual setting. There is a little flexibility given the response of the school district. I think there's like, if you have to call it for the school, I think there's up to 10 days that you can do that as a school district, if I recall appropriately. But the way in which the individual virtual learning, that's not allowable in our traditional schedule unless a student is assigned or enrolled in our MNPS virtual school. The second thing, the second law that did sunset, I think this was a state board policy, team, correct me if I'm wrong, was that students who were out for up to 10 days due to a health response due to COVID, if with proper documentation and academic progress, the parent could confirm that the student's engagement, we can confirm in our system, the work of the students, and we could mark those absences as excused. So it did help with the excused absences, but it still did count, correct me if I'm wrong, towards chronic absenteeism.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Did you want to add something, Justin?
I was just gonna say, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that question. The, the follow-up question to that is, are the new protocols or the new limits listed on website, on your website to make it accessible to parents so that if a student comes down with COVID, they know what the new protocol is and the process is for quarantine or absenteeism?
Yes, we communicated that information out before the start of the school year, at the start of the school year with our back-to-school information. I believe it is also posted on our website, yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, where can we find it?
Is it on the student, the parent student handbook page?
Yes, and then also there's a page designated for student health and COVID as well.
Okay. Student COVID, I'm sorry, student health. Student health. Okay, perfect. Thank you. And?
She said you're welcome.
Oh, okay. Another question that I have is, I know the, the focus of the district is on every student known and the work that we're doing within our schools with our principals, our teachers, our support staff, the hub and all of that. How do parents fit into that equation? And how can we engage parents in the process of building that community so that everyone has the same message of every student known and we're all heading on the same road?
I mean, I think that's a very simple response in that in order to know our students, I mean, we have to know what works for them, we have to know their challenges, we have to know their aspirations. That takes conversations with the student, that takes conversation with the parents, that takes, you know, knowing what clubs and extracurricular activities they're involved in. It takes all of that. And so through the efforts of Navigator, through the efforts of our, even our personalized dashboard, which in its ideal state will have a two-way communication tool, that's what we're pushing towards, to encourage those, those conversations. When we embark upon parent-teacher conferences and other communications and tools with parents, it is kind of undergirded with our mantra of every student known. And so that will continue to be pushed and echoed across our schools. And if you haven't noticed, not only have we been pushing towards every student known, we've been talking about every employee known, every school known. And so we continue to deepen our practice around what that looks like, what that sounds like. deepen our practice around what that looks like, what that sounds like, what does it mean to each leader across our district.
As a follow-up to that, thank you, Dr. Battle. As a follow-up to that question, for parents who are struggling to support their children at home, maybe they don't know how to do homework support or they're trying to increase that parent connection, that parent support at home, how can we support parents in that way? What can parents do to get that level of support if they need it?
I think there's several lines of action. The first thing I will always encourage a parent to do is to talk to the teacher. And of course, we have systems in place for communication with our teachers, our counselors, our leaders. The school team is going to be the best support. We also keep pretty updated on our website, other resources and tools, and our school teams send them home, homework help with homework hotline, tutoring through our promising, you know, accelerating scholars program, what happens over the summer with our enrichment program. And so we're continuing to try to expand upon and be responsive to our parents who are in need of that support or if they don't, we just want to make sure that our students have what they need. So reach out to the teacher, counselor, principal, access the resources that we are sending home, check out our website. We will continue to have family convenings as needed. We will soon be kicking off our Family University Series in response to the feedback that we are receiving and the basic needs of our families to support the learning of our students at home and in school.
Great, thank you. And I'm sorry, I have one more question, y'all. Back to the absent, the chronically out-of-school data, I'm looking at this group and is this all schools or is this just K through eight?
On slide 10, you're looking at all scores for all student groups.
Okay. So for this, I noticed that our English language learners for chronically out-of-school actually did okay. And it was our other subgroups for Black, Hispanic, Native American, economically disadvantaged and our students with disabilities that did not do as well. Were there any particular strategies that we used with our ELL students that we can transcend across our other subgroups to be able to better support the attendance? Or did I misread that?
No, 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 you're right. We've had this, we've had these conversations already. So yes, there again is not just one answer to that question, but we're also digging into the individual school data. We'll be leaning in with principals and school communities who were able to maintain that lower level of chronic absenteeism to learn specifically from them what they've done. Part of our PON, our Principal Leadership Network, structure now is very heavy on principals sharing best practices with one another. And so we've had that very conversation because I think lots of assumptions could be made about our student data, and I think this is one of the challenges, some of the assumptions that are out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tyler, and then I will ask my question.
Yeah, so I just wanted to kind of put a bug in our thoughts about moving forward, about how the new third grade retention law is going to affect this and how when you kind of backload a group of students who are underperforming in one level altogether, what does that do to the data? How will that affect us? How will that change the way we approach the issue? How will that change the way we try to look at it? I have no answers for that, unfortunately, but I'm willing to, you know, dig in with you guys as well. It's just, it's a large, large concern of mine.
Yeah, it's a concern of our team as well. We've got a committee who's been working towards unpacking and supporting around that particular law. I know Tina and I spoke specifically around the impact particularly on the most current cohort of students. We also know that we have initiatives in place right now, like our accelerating scholars, that could help us take to scale of support for students across the district. Quite frankly, I know that there's lots of chatter across the state around the negative impact that this law can and will have on students. And so we are leaning into that conversation and supporting the efforts to get to the legislators around while this is not a good idea, it's not a good practice in supporting our students. And so let's continue to talk and chat around how we might support that effort. And at the same time, we're working internally around what impact this will have on MMPS, our students, and how we can intervene early to try to avoid that particular situation.
Thank you.
I guess on that note, my question is, since someone has to be at the bottom, even though we have all discussed that there's times where you're not necessarily a bottom-ranking situation here, and they're re-ranking them after a year, are they also re-ranking the reward schools?
Reward schools is a one-year status at all times, so yes, we will have a new batch.
Just making sure that's continued, okay? And because our reward schools, we're saying that we're feeling that part of the reason that there's been an increase is because there's been a push of surrounds, surrounding supports and other kinds of wraparound things that we've been doing. There's an initial push of benefit for that. What are our concerns about that wavering or tapering off and is this sustainable?
Well, our core signature initiative was around our literacy reimagine. It's really about ensuring that the core instruction was accessible and available to all students regardless of the school that they attended. And so again, as far as sustainability in our investments, we've invested greatly in professional development for all of our teachers at this point because we started with elementary, moved into the secondary space. Part of this is being able to maintain the resources and the level of professional development we need, quality professional development we need in place for our students. I think, and I'm very proud of the work of this board and the intentionality around our aspirational budgeting process. We've been very strategic, again, and intentional with how we have leveraged non-recurring funds with operational funds. We've already been able to move some of these key strategies over to our operational budget. For instance, when you talk about wraparound services and our advocacy centers in our schools, the majority of them, all but 14 of our schools have that particular program in our operational budget. And so we'll just need to pay careful attention as we're moving into this next budget cycle and for the following year to have that sustainability represented in our operational budget. And I'll just be quite frank and honest, we're going to be transparent about what's working, what's not working. If it's not working, we will not be recommending that we get those recurring funds into our operational budget. We'll pivot and we'll look. Right now, most of what we're seeing is positive impact on our students. We had some other learnings this year around students represented in our schools and some data we've been looking at most recently around enrollment that I'm looking forward to sharing an update with the board around as well. So while we've been implementing those signature initiatives, we've had some other pilots happening around strategies that we will likely want to take to scale as well that will help us sustain and accelerate at the same time those outcomes for our students. And we're staying focused on those focused outcomes around literacy, numeracy, social emotional learning, which includes discipline, attendance, and our goal is, and we were very close to this, having 100% of our students with transition plans.
Great. I'm very excited about, of course, our increase of reward schools. I think it's really important that we have discussed it and that we have all had a big celebration of it. And I think that that's necessary because there's been a ton of work put in there. That's not just a single, like you mentioned, silver bullet decision that's been, that's allowed us to get to that. I personally have some concerns always with the state accountability matrix, and I feel like it's not a clear vision of the true success sometimes of our schools. But there's been an incredible amount of work that's been done by our students, staff and teachers, and that absolutely needs to be recognized, and I'm glad it has been. And there's so many good things that happen in our schools and there's so many good reasons to choose MMPS, this is just one of them. And so I guess with that, can we move on to the academies, another great reason?
We sure can. Again, thank you, Tina, thank you, Paul, for your accountability update. We will turn it over now to Jennifer Bell, our Director of the Academies of Nashville, for a brief update around our same model.
All right, good evening. Thank you, Dr. Battle, thank you, Madam Board Chair Elrod. I must say, that's a great name, it sounds wonderful on you. For the next few moments, I'm going to take you guys through some updates about the academies of Nashville in preparation for this evening. I decided we're going to take a journey. And so we're going to take a journey through the historical landscape that brought the academies of Nashville to fruition, and we're going to talk about where we are and we're also going to talk about where we're going. And so it's always important to note that we have 35 academies that are represented across 12 of our schools. Each of those 12 zone schools are 12-zoned high schools. But what brought us here? I want to set a tone for you in the historical context and talk about 2006, all right? In 2006, our graduation rate was less than 60%, right at 57%. And that wasn't even in four years, that was in five years. So it took 50, five years for 57% of our students to graduate. At that same time, Robert Balfans, he was an author and he was representing Johns Hopkins University, he wrote a nationally recognized article about eight dropout factories right here in our very own school district. So what that led to is it just led to a lot of rumbling about our school district, about our high schools. And so there was just a lack of public support rallying around our schools, that including not only our community, our chamber was asking for the mayor takeover, we had schools that were a risk of state takeover under No Child Left Behind. And so faced within some of these challenges, it was really our principals. Our principals came together and they said, we want to see transformation, we want to s-
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. We want to see the evolution of our high schools and we need support of everyone with that. So the next five or six minutes of time-
But I was gonna, if you don't mind, can we send this particular video out to-
I thought about it.
I know, it was my fault.
I know, I didn't bring popcorn either, so it was fair.
Okay.
All right. I'm going to walk you through, all right? There's a great video and you're all going to receive it in your inbox.
We're going to watch it, too.
But let's talk about the three strands of the academies of Nashville, okay? So when we think about the three strands that allow this work to take place, the first one is a transformation of teaching and learning. And so I want you to ask yourself, go back to when you were in school and you remember sitting there and you asked your teacher, you said, why do we have to learn this? All right, is there, I ask that daily, all right? But through that, we want to shift away from, we know the why, because when we're in our classroom, we see the relevance, our teachers are making connections to us through geometry with things that are actually happening out in the world, all right? I'm seeing these same themes applied throughout my, in my English class, my math class, class, my CTE, even down to my wellness room. All right, we're seeing these, the necessity and the importance and the value of what it is that we're wanting to learn. We're also practicing collaboration, so project-based learning, more inquiry learning, a hands-on approach. And so through the transformation of teaching and learning, we move away from, myself as the teacher standing in front of the class and I'm delivering instruction, but it's a full-on engagement of that instruction. With that became the influx and increase in the capacity for students to take place in advanced academics, to earn those IB, those AP credits, those dual enrollment credits. And then also ensuring that our teachers were trained, because if we're going to transform what we do in the classroom, we've got to know how to do that. So investing in training such as like how to team, how to collaborate with other teachers in project-based learning. In addition to that, you go to the second strand, and the second strand is transforming the secondary school experience. And let's start with that, the freshman academy, all right? A freshman academy in our schools, did you know that research suggests that on average 75% of students who do not complete ninth grade do not graduate? So through the transformation of our high schools, we were able to create a smaller learning community. I went to a school with over 3,000 students. I felt like a number. I loved my high school, but I felt like a number. But while we transformed our high schools, we created these smaller learning communities, freshman seminar being, sorry, freshman academy being one of those, where I have a cohort of teachers, an academy principal, a counselor, who are all supporting us as students. So we've created a smaller school within our schools, and those would become known as academies. In addition to that, we have our third strand, and that's transforming the business and civic engagement. And we really needed to, as a former academy principal in the Academy of Aviation who is also afraid of flying, it was going to be quite a challenge for me to talk to my students about aeronautics. But if I can go out and I can learn from the airport and I can learn from Triumph and I can learn from some of our partners, then I can come back and achieve strand one of bringing relevance into the classroom because I can make connections, but also to be able to bring leaders throughout our city into our schools and provide our students with these real-world experiences. Because if I want to believe it, I have to see it, all right? And so when we have those three strands implemented with fidelity, we can achieve four Rs. And the first one is rigor. And the best definition I ever heard of rigor was said that it is something that's a little bit hard. So what's a little bit hard for you might not be a little bit hard for me and vice versa. But it's always challenging us through strand one, transforming the way that we teach in our classrooms for every one of our students, every student known, to be challenged to do something that's a little bit hard for them. The second R is relevance, it's creating those connections. We're removing that why question from the classroom, we're replacing with, I get it. But we see the connections and the work that we're doing, not only in our academies, but also in the skills that we need throughout everyday life. Then our relationships, where by creating those smaller learning communities, that strand two, we're building relationships because now we have a smaller group of students. I am known by my students, I mean, by my teachers, and I feel that connection. And then finally, you have readiness. So the readiness applies all three of the strands. It's that I've had opportunity to earn that advanced academic credit. I've also had the opportunity to go out and explore with our business leaders in our community, and I have been taught and prepared with the professionalism skills in the trade schools, I need to be successful in college and career. Through the academy model, we have tiers to our experiential learning. It starts in the ninth grade, but as you all know, we know the experiential learning, college career readiness, actually beginning in kindergarten, but I'm focused today on the academies of Nashville, all right? So in ninth grade, every student participates in a career fair. It's the first time we're having it in person, November 8th, come on down, Music City Center. But we will have hundreds of professionals out in our community that will come. All of our high schools will be represented and students will be able to learn and be introduced to various careers throughout the city. They'll also begin starting their college visits. In the 10th grade year, we challenge for 100% of our students to have an industry-related field trip. Because if I, I might know that I want to go into healthcare, but all I really know is that there's nurses and doctors. But if I visit and I see all and explore all the other careers that exist out there in that industry, my wheels start turning. The third one is in 11th grade years with a job shadowing. So now I'm not only visiting that business, but I'm also spending time with a cohort or an employer themselves, or I'm doing an internship. A great example of that is think about our credit unions in our schools. We have students who take their, each level of their course, by the 12th grade year, they're completing, they're running the banks inside their schools, but then they're going, working in, they're out of school time in summers at the local branches in those internships. And the 12th grade year, and I shared a little bit about this last spring, and we continue to celebrate as our career practicum, where our students are not only learning what it's like to work in a job that will lead them to opportunities in high school, high wage, but also earning wages on an average of $15 an hour. And then we have to look at the numbers. So let's look at where we were in 2006 and let's look at where we are now. So our graduation rate, 57.8%, took five years to get to 57.8%. And in 2021, 2022, coming off the heels, actually, let's replace that, still in a pandemic, our graduation rate at 81.8%. Do the math on how many more students graduated that would not have if we stayed on that trajectory of 57.8. Attendance rates on average, 2006, 87.8%. We've seen those go up, we did see, we have to be honest with ourselves, we have had the impact of a pandemic. We're seeing that recover, though, even through that our students return. So I'm excited to see where those are, looking at average daily attendance rates over the start of the school year, we're on a positive track there. And our suspension rates, here's a big one, when students are in the classroom, then they can get all four of those Rs. But with our student interventions and our teaming model, cohort of teachers that are supporting students, we've seen reductions in suspension rates by over, from 32% all the way down to 11%. Let's look at some of those advanced academic opportunities I mentioned early on, and specifically, I'm going to share with you all some information that we have available now. Do note that there will be a presentation on a later date, where we'll be sharing a deeper dive into advanced academics, IB, ACE, Cambridge, et cetera. That data is not currently available. But we do have data from last year for our CTE, early post-secondary opportunities in dual credit and in industry credentials. So if you look there, in 2012 to 2013, we had one lone student- So if you look there, in 2012 to 2013, we had one lone student, one student, who earned a certification. Now, these certifications can be your pipeline to your career. All right, you can graduate from high school earning $50,000, $60,000 a year with just your certification. But in this last year, we had 2,400 certifications earned. And know that in that, that 2,400, 50% growth in students who took and passed more rigorous certifications that employers were looking for. Also, in this past year, you look at dual credit, 2012, 2013, we had about 203 students who earned or passed their dual credit exam. This past year, we were at 430. Now, look at your growth from 2020 to 2021. You had 329 students. The following year, you had 430. You're in a trajectory, if you increase that number alone, 100 students per year, then you're going to double it in two years. We need to continue to grow the capacity for more students earning these early post-secondary opportunities. And I can tell you that even in certifications this morning, we got off a phone call worth 1,000 additional students who are going to be earning CPR this year. So we're already on track to greatly exceed those numbers. Some highlights from this past year, community investment. What we do to gauge community investment is we look at time and talent. So when we look at our business partners, we want you to bring the expertise to train people like me who are afraid of flying about aviation. So we capture the investment that our community and partners make into each of our academies through a community investment, that calculated number, and you'll see growth from 2020 to 2021, and then also into 2001, 2022. So we are seeing on average almost a half a million dollars that the community is vesting in to supporting the work of the academies in each of those 12 schools. Another big win for us this past year was work-based learning, the learning and the earning that I've shared with you all. We had a goal of 15 students. We're going to have 15 students who are participating in career practicum. We actually went to 68. And of those 68 included students who were employed by Metro Schools. 55 of those students completed the work-based learning practicum over the course of the year. We had 15 business partners this year. Note, we have 28 business partners. Our funding, we split. So we had half, about half of our students received their compensation and their pay and wages through IOA, and other, our other 50% was those, our employers paying students directly. I've given you a breakdown of just the demographics of our students who participated in the career practicum work-based learning this past year. And then we always look to celebrate the work that we're doing through challenging ourselves to achieve the National Career Academy Coalition certification. I will tell you that each and every one of our academies have been certified through National Career Academy Coalition. This past year, we had a total of nine, nine academies go through certification and continue. That is a very rigorous effort, and it takes, it's renewed every five years. We took a deeper dive last year, too. We said, we don't only want to look at the quality of each of our academies, but we want to hold ourselves to the quality of and accountability of our pathways within those academies. So we had 11 of our academies, I'm sorry, pathways go through Tennessee pathways. So now you've got academies that are nationally certified and the pathways within those academies that are certified. As of now, we have more, we, being Metro Nashville Public Schools, have more certified pathways than any other district in the state. And then there is the fun stuff. In June, we were able to bring our, so many of our teachers and leaders within our schools along with our partners together for our first AON conference. And we also brought back our in-person AON awards that we have not been able to do in person for quite some time. And what a celebration it was, at Martin, we had hosted a two-day conference. We really focused on taking a deeper dive, understanding that through turnover and through transitions and returning back from COVID, et cetera, we sometimes need to be reminded of the great work that we're doing, and also to hone in on that skill. So we focused a lot of our time in the summer around that teaching through the lens, that relevance in the classroom, strand one, along with our business partner engagement, how to engage being that strand three. And I'll show you a couple of highlights from the awards there. We had beautiful trophies, but it was a great event, and we are excited and will continue doing that for quite some time. And then a last big highlight I have for you all, as we completed our 15th year of the Academies of Nashville last year, and as we did so, we wanted to go on a journey of not only looking at how we continue our transformation, but also what does that look like? And so we went through a logo rebranding, and this included input from our business partners, teachers, students, principals, and so forth. And you will see the new Academies of Nashville logo and how it might look at many of our schools across the district. Do I have time?
Go for it. This is short. It's short.
Okay.
All three of my children went to Metro Schools. My daughter, in the middle of her junior year, she transferred to Hillsborough because they had some advanced courses that at the time weren't available at Overton. And I was very proud of her. She graduated with two AP courses under her belt, so that gave her a boost going into college. But it still took her five years to get through college. She started with an engineering major, and then she realized, no, that's not for me. She went for a more applied math major, no, that's not for me. So then she graduated with communication major. Well, then she goes out and she can't find a job in communications, so she takes a job as a receptionist for a physical therapy clinic, and then she realized, I want to be a physical therapist. If the academies had been in place in Metro Schools when she graduated, and they were not, she would have had the experience where she would have been able to explore the various majors. And it's funny, some of the criticisms that I've heard of the academies over the years, some parents have said, I don't think our children at age 15 are ready to choose a career. Well, they may not be, but they can explore and discover. And then by the time they get to college, they don't have to spin their wheels. If she had had that experience, I think she would have said, that's what I want to do. And it would have saved my husband and I a whole lot of money.
That's funny.
It's three of my children.
There we go. So let's tell you to where we're headed. Over the summer, we embarked on a journey to really start out strategizing what the next three-year strategic plan would look like for the Academies of Nashville, and our commitment to accelerate the Academies of Nashville. As we continue our transformation, we are accelerating that work in. And we went back to our roots and started with our executive principals, brought them all to the table. And they said, what is the work that's really going to help us to accelerate these academies of Nashville? And you'll see that identified through six theories of action, inspiring, equipping school teams, amplifying our success story, continuously improving our guiding principles, providing applied experiences, developing evidence of an MMPS-ready grad, and creating an AON metrics of success. And so with our strategic planning, we have brought together each of our business partners, and it is a all-in community, much different than what we saw in 2006. Everybody's bought in, everyone is helping to lead that work so that we can achieve our goals for over the next three years. So with that being said, Dr. Battle, I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much, Jennifer, for that Academies of Nashville update. And Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any questions? Cheryl?
So I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say kudos. I have, I started out in 2009 as an Academies of Nashville business partner, and I have, it has been the best, the best experience of my life. And I agree with the parent, because my son went through the Academies of Nashville in 2000, he graduated from Antioch High School in 2011. And it saved me a lot of money because my, my children had an opportunity to, or my youngest son had an opportunity to experience the Academies of Nashville, and he quickly learned what he didn't want to do. So that was huge for me. My daughter, who graduated a year before the academies model was introduced at, at her school, she was so upset that she didn't get to go through that model, and she was jealous of my son. So I agree, and I will tell you, from my personal experience, this is an absolute amazing program, and I am so honored to be a part of it. And for anybody who has not experienced the academies, if you have not spent any time in the academies, please do so. And I hope to see everybody at the career fair. I'll be the one cheering the kids on.
Great, thank you.
Actually, technical questions. Can you explain dual credit for the audience who don't understand what you meant by that and that chart?
It sometimes can be a little confusing. We've got dual enrollment and dual credit. And if you start with dual enrollment, it means I'm duly enrolled. I'm now a student of Metro Nashville Public Schools and a student of Nashville State Community College or somewhere else. Through dual credit, through my coursework, my standards, my scope and sequence that are taught in my classroom, I am meeting the criteria to earn college credit at one of our post-secondaries. So for example, through my maintenance, maintenance light repair course, I might have covered the same standards that are taught for credit at TCAT. So if I continue on only to TCAT, I can apply those credits towards my completion of the program.
Great. And then what's WIOA?
Yes. Workforce Innovative Opportunity Act.
Okay.
I hope I got that right. I did.
It sounds right.
You've got to say it with confidence. Yes.
Word for each one.
That's right.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tyler?
Yes, I love the academies. I just, I mean, Dr. Battle, you and I have talked about this before. I've tried to, you know, connect you with people that will help us expand our academies. And that is something that I still think that, you know, the more we can expand it, the more opportunities we can offer students that we don't currently offer them, to keep them in school, keep them excited about it, and give them a pathway to true citizenship in a way that is meaningful and that they're proud of. I just am very excited about that. That being said, I also know that it can sometimes be a struggle to find instructors who are willing to work for wages that would, that are a lot less than they could make if they were working in their field, doing that actual job, as opposed to teaching high school students how to do it. So how are we working to kind of combat that, to make sure that we have enough instructors to fully staff our academies so that all of our students have these same kinds of great experiences?
Yeah, I think the first thing is, we've fortunately had lots of success this year in staffing with our academies. We do have some strategies around how we place industry leaders on our pay scale. And so they do come in at step five.
Hard to fill positions, I believe they are, step five.
So we do kind of slot them in because we want to take that in consideration, because there is a pay difference between being in industry and being in, in the classroom. That's why the investments in pay will also help with our recruitment efforts. And Jennifer, anything else you want to add to specific strategies?
To Dr. Battle's point, we have, out of 120 some odd CTE positions, we have only two that are unfilled at this time. Among those, the hardest-filled positions, such as health science. So as Dr. Battle mentioned, we do have those on elevated. It is a community effort to fill these positions, and think even in the scope of health science, where healthcare in general is challenged by. So we really, we really rely on advocacy and support, so for others to be that word of mouth of those opportunities. So we lean in a lot on our post-secondary institutions, and with our partners to help us to bridge connections to those positions. There is some advocacy that can be done with the state level that wrote legislation 2020 passed that they would help pay for teachers earning those occupational licenses, but no guidance has come out on that. So there's an opportunity for us to continue to advocate for that work.
Great. Great. That's good to hear that we have plans and we're moving forward. And I love to hear that we only, that we have almost fully staffed our academies. That's amazing.
Got to get to 100%.
Yeah, I'm excited about that. And then my last question is, does every single high school have a freshman academy?
Do. Every zoned high school has a freshman academy.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Berthina?
Thank you. I have a, I'm a fan of the academies. I've seen the great work, been part of the inception of the academies, working in high school. However, I was on the campaign trail recently, and there's a lot of misperception in our community about the difference between vocational programs, CTE, and our academies. Would you mind clarifying that for us so that our community understands what they are?
Sure. You go, and then I want to follow up with a personal story.
I think it's really important, if you look at our theories of action, our strategic plan, one of the things that you'll see in there is a commitment around each of our founders, thinking about pencil in the chamber and, and Metro Schools and alignment, is that we've got to be able to tell the same story. We need to be able to tell the story. And so it's important for us that we're going out, we're speaking about the academies, that we are speaking about, we don't use the term vocational education. So we've got to be able to share that same language, that our students are completing a CTE pathway within their academy. And to be able to continue that, to share that message, that the academies of Nashville, they are a transformation that are constantly, constantly evolving. And so I hope that kind of gets us started, and I think I'll let Dr. Battle take it from there.
Yeah, I'll just give a personal example. Being a graduate of Metro Nashville Public Schools, John Overton High School, to be specific. So I graduated before the academies model was in MMPS, but I was fortunate enough that I knew my career path. I knew that I wanted to be a professional educator. In fact, that's why I attended John Overton High School, because they had a vocational program. So I participated in the vocational program, and y'all have heard me talk about, I had wonderful teachers and principals and counselors along the way. Everyone had a positive impact on me regardless of the school I was in. Fortunately, in my, in my experience in studying, getting prepared for post-secondary, and my passion to be a professional educator, the only person who knew that was my childcare teacher. Only teacher who knew that. Right? In our academies model, you have a small learning community, a school within a school, where every teacher knows what your aspirations are, what you're exploring, what you may or may not learn you want to do in the future. And that's a great learning as well, because that saves time, money, and energy once you get to post-secondary. But I was a principal of a high school that had a teaching as a professional academy. The difference in their vocational experience, which tends to be a standalone, is that you have a collective effort of teachers, counselors, administrators, who are intentionally planning for this rigor, for this relevance, building the relationships, helping students create a deeper understanding of the professional career that they're, they're interested in. Coupled with industry certifications, intentional dual enrollment and dual credit opportunities. So the difference tends to be a specified pathway of CTE courses that get you prepared as opposed to standalone vocational experiences. There is a space for that when you're thinking about, you know, specific professions and where that might work, but we're trying to create a model that deepens the experiences, that connects to not only the CTE pathways, but their content courses as well, as we're preparing the whole student for their post-secondary experiences. So that's, that tends to be how I kind of separate the two, and what we have traditionally known as a vocational experience, which quite frankly, if you look back at the history, really tracked students, and it's particularly in its early days, and what we are envisioning in our ideal space around the Academies of Nashville.
Thank you. And just to, just to clear that up from my perspective, we have a lot, lot of people who, in our community, who went through Metro Nashville Public Schools or through Nashville Public Schools when they had vocational tech schools. And so oftentimes, they don't believe that we still have vocational programs or trade schools within a school, within our schools. And I just want to make sure that it's clear that every single high school has academies, which, across Metro Nashville Public Schools. And that, and that's the area that I think oftentimes, people don't realize that are in our, in our schools. And it's a great program. It's a nationwide model that's being used across the country, and we really need to tap in and see how we can support and really help increase the turnout and the support for students who go through that program.
Yeah, I think a part of our strategic plan moving forward is about educating, bringing that awareness to our Academies of Nashville model. And for, for those who are here and those who are watching and listening in, you know, you might not know that every year, we have hundreds of leaders from across the country, even internationally, come to Nashville to study and learn about our Academies of Nashville model. So it is very well-known. In fact, it might even be better known outside of Nashville for some odd reason, because it is such a gem of a model to have right here in our very own schools.
Forty-two states and four different countries have come to visit and learn what we are doing here today. So it's important that every one of our neighbors know what we're doing as well.
And, and thank you. And the final question is, just to
And the final question is, just to clarify, just to clarify, which high schools in Nashville and Metro Nashville Public Schools have academies?
All 12 zoned high schools.
All 12 zoned high schools?
Yeah.
Got it. And there's also a website?
Yes.
Okay. And what is that website that we can look it up to see what academies are?
Academies of Nashville, but as a great resource is that any family can go to their child's homeschool website. So even if you go to your child's school, then you'll see each of the academies that are offered there and the courses within that and opportunities within that academy.
Awesome. Thank you.
And follow us on Twitter, MyFutureMyWay.
My Future My Way.
Yes.
Thank you.
Cheryl?
Yes, I just have a follow-up question. And this goes back to, this goes back a couple of years, so things may have changed quite a bit, but I want to ask, there was at one point a disconnect between industry certifications as far as what the state approved and what we wanted to offer our students. And I say that because, as you know, with business partners, things change in the, in the industry quite often. And sometimes those certifications that are approved by the State Board of Education don't always keep up with the current trends. So are we, are we in a better place now with the State Board of Education in approving certifications that are more current?
Yes, I would say so. In addition to that, there's a system and structure in place now that allows us to submit requests for certifications to be, to be approved.
Perfect. Thank you.
Elena, please, our newest school board member.
Hi. So I was just wondering, how is each individual, like each school, I guess, individual school, how are their academies chosen? Because I was just thinking like, back to when I was transitioning to high school and I was looking at what schools offer what academies. How, how are we like ensuring that if I want to go into hospitality, and I think Antioch has a cool hospitality academy, but I can't drive to Antioch every day, like, how, I just, I was just wondering, how are those academies determined per community to make sure that everyone is able to go to whatever academy?
That's a really great question. And I do wish we could offer every academy at every school, but there's, there's a process to determining which academies and pathways will be offered at a school. And a lot of that is very much driven by industry demand, student interest in those academies. You have to look at the availability of the resources and partnerships to support those. And so what you might notice is if you look across our schools, and I'm going to go use health science for just a moment, is in 10 of our schools, it's also one of the most in-demand industries in our nation at this time. So all those factors take into consideration. We do have a school choice where a student can go to a school that may offer an academy or pathways that's not offered at their zone school. And we do recognize that transportation does pose challenges. And so we have been working with our local transportation systems to create better routes to allow students. But do know this, and this is what I constantly tell individuals, is that the skills that you learn, regardless of which academy you're in, are transferable in all things that you choose to do. Met a young lady recently who went into a, she was in automotive academy pathway, and she was going into healthcare. And I asked her, I said, "Why did you do that?" She said, "Because I could learn to use small instruments that were going to be applicable, and I learned how to work with others to solve problems." And so you can utilize those 21st century and those employability skills regardless of which academy or pathway you're in, and they will follow with you throughout life.
Two additional things. Our pathways, academies tend to mirror Southside and Northside to increase access to the specific pathways. And this might be a good time to plug the investment of this board to continue with our STRIDE program for students and for all staff, which provides no calls to students or staff members, transportation through the transportation, public transportation system.
Thank you.
Ms. Gentry?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things I just want to highlight, that HCA Healthcare has been significant in that expansion of the Health Sciences Academies availability across metro public
The $70,000 grant that they just provided, thank you very much.
We'll get you some more. We'll get you some more. So thank you for that. And so the other thing I'll, I'll add to your question, the comment, is that it also is helpful when that industry partner can offer everything else that goes with being in the academy. Not just the, the money, but the experiences, the job shadowing opportunities, the mentors and things of that nature. So all of that is what's taken into consideration when we consider the partner and what pathway we're able to offer. I'll also say, and I really appreciate the last comment about the transferable skills of the 9,000 jobs I have. One of them is as an adjunct professor at Tennessee State University, and I teach professional development for graduating engineering students. And one of the things I tell them when they're creating their resume is, don't put your job description on there. Nobody cares. What are the skills? What are the skills you utilized or, or developed as a part of that role? So that's, that's an excellent point about the transferable skills. But my question is, do we get feedback? Do we have a feedback loop from those industry partners? So students that we've sent to job shadows, students that we've sent there to even be employed, what is that feedback mechanism and can, is it possible to share sort of what they're seeing in our students and where we have opportunities to strengthen?
That's, that's a really great question. And to your point about that investment, that time and talent investment is priceless because our students would not have those experiences if it weren't for our partners that were investing their time and talent into us. There is a, for, when we look at the feedback from our partners, there's a robust structure, beginning with our partnership councils. We actually have an employability skills rubric that our employers use when our students are on the sites and also used in the classroom. It was created by partners for students. And so that's how we kind of track their progress to meeting some of those identified skills. Secondly, is going to be the partnership councils that meet on a quarterly basis. Those are facilitated by our Nashville Chamber, represented by each of our partners, and is in those discussions, that they give the feedback on what skills that students are lacking, that we take back then to our advisory board meetings that are occurring at the school level and implement and integrate the resources and supports that students need through that small learning community of the teaming.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Player, and then I'll close.
I just want to kind of just piggyback on what Dr. Nabala McKinney said, that the vocation school of yesteryear has evolved. And so I think we need to make sure we're clear that, well, we think of traditional vocational schools are somewhat obsolete just because of the industry and the career has changed, where you look at computer science, where you look at technology, your classic woodworking skills, it's more of a niche artistic project comparative whether you automotive or you do healthcare. And so I think when we go out and communicate the message of vocation, then that we are transforming it really for truly 21st century jobs that we're really in, and that we articulate that to the community, that our academies are a type of vocation, it's not the vocation that we are traditionally used to thinking of, that a lot of, a lot of our traditional vocation now requires, as you said, certification and technology, and that we're moving into the 21st century and jobs to, our academies reflects those, those industries and careers of the current times. And I think that's where a lot of the miscommunication comes from, is what we traditionally think from being Gen Xers and Baby Boomers compared to what millennials and Gen Xers are doing. So I think as we go and promote our, our schools and our academies, saying that this is the new level or the new type or the transformation, really, I won't say type, more transformation of vocational education, that it's totally different because the industries and the career require different expertise, different things, and it's not the traditional way. So we're not presenting it in traditional way. And that knew the, was it CNT, C?
CTE.
CTE, thank you. Is a new term for it. So I think we just have to translate the vocabulary that we are traditionally known for, that what's, that's acting now.
Our academies model, for those watching and of course those in attendance, is nationally recognized, and it's well-known across the entire nation, though, and as Dr. Battel said, it's better known probably outside of Nashville unfortunately than it is within side of Nashville. It is very common for myself, and I speak to other districts within Nashville, and especially within other areas, whether it's part of great city schools or other communications that I might have with other boards and educational leaders, they always ask about the academies model, and they want to replicate it in some way, or they would like to partner with us. They've come on a trip before. It is something for us to be exceptionally proud of. And I know, Jennifer, you had some big shoes to fill when you took on this position. And so I really appreciate this presentation and the incredible information you presented. I would like to ask that in the future, if we have additional needs, particularly for the work-based learning, I know when we first discussed it in the spring, we've been able to expand it, which I'm very excited about. But at that time, we had asked if we need additional partners to let us know as a board so we can best advocate for that. So if that's a continued need or want for expansion, please let us know so we can use our relationships, whether it's with the Chamber of Commerce or any other group, so we can expand that and continue all this great work. I really appreciate that. It was exceptionally thorough, and I'm very excited that everyone here and also watching could see all the good work that we're doing, both in reward and in academies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask one thing? Could we repeat the career fair dates?
Oh, it's November 8.
Thank you. I just want everybody to be aware.
Yes. And we'll mention again, and we'll mention it several times, I promise.
Thank you.
Is there anything else, Dr. Battel?
That'll be all.
Thank you. I so appreciate the people that have stuck around for public participation. I know that it is later than usual, and you have been so generous to wait with us. I hope that you have found your time here with us to be beneficial and that you are, you're proud of your elected officials for being vigorous and thorough with their questions. What we're going to do for public participation, in case you've not been here before, as I see some new faces, is you have three minutes to speak. You will see the names of people listed here. We have about 12 on this list. What I'm going to ask you to do, in case you have been here before, this is a little bit new, so I'm going to start asking people to queue up. So if you're one of the first three people, if you'll get in line, so one, and then two and three, and then if you'll kind of watch that, so we can go ahead and go through that. When you have your three minutes, you'll know what your time is because there's a timer on the side. You can see it says three minutes already over here to your right. And at the end of that three minutes, you will hear our beautiful bell, who has that bell?
Thank you. We, it's, we're, we're almost to Price is Right level, almost, guys. So at the end of that, you will hear yours. So I so appreciate y'all sticking around. So if we will first start with number one, Maxwell, if you are here, and then two, Anna, and three, Daniel, if you'll go ahead and get in line, so we can get started. So first person, oh, I should also say, you do need to tell us your name. You do need, you do not need to tell us your address. That has sometimes been a question in the past because this is a public forum. We would really appreciate it if you know what your district is, if you would tell us that information, that would be so helpful. But you do not need to give us your address since it is a public forum. So the first person is Maxwell. And if that person is not here, we'll go with Anna. And then number three, it sounds like you're it, Daniel.
I'll go first.
Thank you, Daniel.
All right. And I just came up here because I wanted to say thank you. I was here for the Grow Your Own recipient a couple Tuesdays ago. So to the Board of Education, a simple thank, you cannot express my level of gratitude for all the opportunities I have been granted as an MMPS employee. By the way, I'm Daniel Schuss from Neely's Bend Elementary. From starting off as a parapro to becoming a tutor, to becoming a resident teacher, to now being the third grade English teacher at Neely's Bend Elementary, I have been able to grow exponentially in four short years. Particularly, the Grow Your Own Grant allowed me to work towards my goal of becoming a teacher without having to worry about keeping afloat financially. So while my words may fail to express how grateful I truly am, I must say to everyone here and everyone who has played a part in getting me where I am today, from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Hold on, we don't want to take away his time, guys.
It's okay. I owe a great deal of thanks specifically to the staff and students at my school, Neely's Bend Elementary. My coworkers have offered me so much guidance while their students, while our students have shown me exactly how fulfilling trading knowledge can be. Together, we all live up to our motto of setting a standard in the Northwest. However, this year, we have adopted a mindset of continuing our shift to better. And this idea is what inspired me to speak tonight. We want to give our students at Neely's Bend every opportunity to, every opportunity to be successful, and programs like STEAM would help us do just that. Between the addition of fifth grade and the rapid growth in our community of Madison, we have gained many new learners and diverse interests this year, and we are dedicated to serving all of their individual educational needs. Please help us in offering our students as many opportunities as I've been granted. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Wonderful. Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I guess number four is Sark, and then after that's five, Nicole, and six, oh, Council Member Hancock. So first Sark, thank you.
Hello, Chair and members of the board. My name is Sark Assadorian, and this is my first time speaking, so I'm a little nervous. But I, I'm, go to Hillsborough, I'm a senior, and I'm in District Eight. So my biology teacher, Dr. Anderson, had resigned recently because she found a new job. She left on her own fruition, and after working five years to share her knowledge with us, many students were very touched and saddened that she left. Dr. Anderson focused on, is a person focused on altruism in her life. One moment that sticks out to me is when she told us about how she opened her house up to a formerly incarcerated man who lived with them for many years till he could find his own home. When I got the email of her resignation after she was out of class for having COVID, I was unable to say, I was very sad because I was unable to say goodbye, and I was grieving that I was no longer being, going to be taught by somebody I admired. I didn't know what to do with my feelings, so I turned to my mom for some advice. She suggested a going away party, and I really liked that idea. Me and Dr. Anderson emailed back and forth, and we agreed upon that she would come during school, during lunch, so we could easily say goodbye to her. The day before, I checked my email and saw a message from Dr. Anderson. Through the vice principal at her school, she was informed per our principal, Dr. Pelham's orders, she was not able to say goodbye to us at school grounds. Me and my classmates were angry, why were we not allowed to say goodbye to a teacher that had worked for, worked with us to get us summer internships and prepare us for the IB tests? The district talks about social emotional learning as being a priority, but if you really want to truly prioritize social emotional learning, I think it's important to allow students to say goodbye to the teachers that really matter in their lives. I hope this story connects with you, members of the board, and I hope you move to implement rules and guidelines to protect, to make sure that teachers can say goodbye to their students. I'm going to send you an email following up with my points, and I hope we're in contact. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nicole. Councilmember Hancock.
You have to have the tearjerker right before me. I'd appreciate it if you might waive the three minutes. I won't be super, super long, but I did have Councilwoman Porterfield here with me. She had to leave because of our long meeting, and I do have a gift for all of you from the entire Metro Council, so hopefully that will help expand my time. We actually passed a resolution in support of Metro Nashville Public Schools' full implementation of sustainable practices throughout the school district. I, in concentration of everyone's time, narrowed this down to a top 10 list to be fun, like Dave Letterman. So 10, whereas children who develop a positive relationship with nature are more likely to become tomorrow's stewards of our natural heritage, children who have safe access to these public outdoor spaces are more resilient, and all children should feel welcome at all of Nashville Davidson County's parks, pools, zoos, nature centers, trails, waterways, and other open spaces. Let every student be known. Nine, whereas all communities that have access to nature experience educational, emotional, and physical benefits, communities in disadvantaged areas receive even greater benefits from nature through improved health equity, lower rates of mortality and disease, and increased food security, as families gain knowledge and ability to grow and preserve fresh food for themselves. And eight, whereas Nashville Public Schools is confident that through these forward steps, it can help the Metropolitan Government of Nashville and Davidson County achieve its goals for our city to reach zero waste, a reduced carbon footprint, and increased tree canopy. And seven, whereas Metro Nashville Public Schools has the potential to make positive, tangible environmental change in Nashville and Davidson County by teaching students to be stewards of their local and global communities, the earth, and its resources. And six, whereas Metro Nashville Public Schools has seen that when students experience a culture in their schools that is rich in sustainability, outdoor education, and social emotional learning, they experience and benefit from dramatic academic improvement, are more confident, better problem solvers, more creative, and become involved local citizens. And five, whereas Metro Nashville Public Schools is working to develop and implement a systemic framework to coordinate these efforts and improve student learning and education. framework to coordinate these efforts and improve student learning and involvement as the students' district's culture moves to one of sustainability. And four. Whereas the mayor has created a Sustainable Advisory Committee, consisting of people within the city, government, environmental community, and school district to map out the path that Metro Nashville Public Schools can take to implement sustainable practices and work to support the city's sustainable goals. And three. Whereas MMPS has shown that moving towards sustainability will benefit our community in many ways, not the least of which is good stewardship of taxpayers' monies and resources. And two. Whereas the Metro Children's Outdoor Bill of Rights has been personalized to Nashville and Davidson County using the Tennessee Children's Outdoor Bill of Rights, examples from other cities, and suggestions by Metro Nashville Public School students to include every child has a right to ride a bike, splash in a creek, fish in a pond or stream, hike a trail or walk in the woods, enjoy a campfire and make smores, camp under the stars, discover plants and animals in a park, explore nature, play in the mud, hug an old tree, plant a tree, jump in a pile of leaves. So therefore, be it resolved that the Metro Council goes on record as congratulating and endorsing Metro Nashville Public Schools for their work to implement sustainable practices, including outdoor education throughout the district, and strongly encourages a continuation of these efforts. It was introduced by Tanya Hancock, Tom Juffel, Bob Nash, Berkeley Allen, Delisha Porterfield, Angie Henderson, Zulfat Sorara, Emily Benedict, and was passed unanimously by Metro Council. Thank you so much for hearing me. I got to see most of you yesterday. I'm so glad to see you again. And I just have to shout out to District Nine, Council District Nine, that all three of the elementary schools in District Nine, Amqui, Neely's Bend, Anne Smith &amp; Craig's had all got Reward School status, so that's pretty awesome. And I'm in Emily Masters School District Three. So does anyone want to distribute?
You'll give them to Dr. Sevier.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate all you guys are doing.
Thank you. Same to you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Paul. Paul Prill.
Hi, I'm in District Two, and I voted for you. Just so you know. My name is Paul Prill. I'm a retired faculty member from Lipscomb University, and now a certified master gardener and a board member of Wild Ones of Middle Tennessee. Hypothetically, what would happen to Nashville tomorrow if 70% of the restaurants and 50% of the grocery stores disappeared? If tomorrow 40% of the housing became uninhabitable, the economic and social chaos which would ensue is unthinkable. Without food and habitat, people would either flee the city or succumb to the stress of trying to live here. For hundreds of thousands of insects, birds, and mammals in Davidson County, this hypothetical is a daily reality. Urban infill paves over or builds on land which used to offer wildflowers and native grasses, food and habitat for all these creatures. What green space remains features mostly monocultures of corn or wheat or soybeans in the area farms, or monocultural manicured lawns of fescue or Bermuda grass in the city. As Nashville continues to develop, the city has worked to buffer that development with new city parks, greenways, and bicycle paths for humans to enjoy some quiet spaces and experience nature in the city. Unfortunately, we haven't thought to create, at the same time, corridors of food and habitat for wildlife migration and survival. I know that students need places to play outdoors, but schoolyards can serve a dual purpose. The Green Schoolyard Movement shows us how to reimagine these spaces for native gardens and play spaces that encourage students to love nature. The Tennessee Smart Yards Program teaches students and staff about how communities work together to keep our soil healthy, our water clean, and our wildlife thriving. Even a 100-200-square-foot meadow or pocket prairie could provide nutrition and habitat for insects and birds. Evidence of the effectiveness of these spaces is clear in Tennessee, other parts of the United States, and on every continent. The United Nations has declared this the decade of ecosystem restoration. We must use all our available greens, available green spaces, all of our available green spaces, to replace what has been lost, which right now in Tennessee is 30% of our songbirds, 80% of our monarch butterflies, and 50% of bubblebees and native bees. We're at the precipice of losing so much more than just a few acres of grass. We pass up the opportunity to involve students in appreciating, preserving, and restoring the natural world. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Richard. Richard Hitt.
Dr. Batt, Chair Elrod, and other members of the board. My name is Richard Hitt. I'm a retired math professor, and I'm here representing the Middle Tennessee chapter of Wild Ones. For those of you who don't know what Wild Ones is, it's a national nonprofit organization that supports the use of native plants in the landscape, as Dr. Prill was saying, because of the benefit it provides in support of biodiversity. I'm going to get less muffled for you. Of our 150 members in Wild Ones, 80 reside in Davidson County. So I'm here to speak in support of outdoor education as a means to improve learning, improve health, and even improve test scores, standardized test scores. There are literally hundreds of research papers and studies which support this. The National Wildlife Federation has an excellent 40-page booklet on these topics called Back to School, Back Outside. At the recent in-service training for metro teachers, I was privileged to meet 25 teachers, science teachers from the native, from the Nashville schools, and we had, I was in the sustainability branch of that. And we were interested in talking with them, and one thing I picked up from them is they're interested in having some sort of outside training facility, whether it's a pollinator garden, or an arboretum-type space where they can take their students, change the mood, and that's part of the outdoor education movement that we're talking about. The teachers didn't seem to have a connection with the metro schools in terms of finding a way to fund these projects. And so for the pollinator gardens, I mentioned the Wild Ones Grant Program Seeds for Education, and some of these teachers intended to apply for that. For the tree program, I mentioned the Nashville Tree Bank, or the Metro Tree Bank, which is a beautiful source of funds for adding trees to public spaces like schoolyards. I lead a group of volunteers that maintain the native gardens at Westmead Elementary Schools, so each week I get to go out there, experience the native plants. We've documented 32 species of pollinators just in the past season that live there and use, use the native plants for resources. And it's a wonderful education opportunity that would allow students to connect what they learn in the classroom with something they can see in their yard. They don't have to go on a school trip to water parks, they can just walk out in the schoolyard and experience this on a daily basis and see the changes over time. So to sum this up, let me just say that guided learning about nature helps us all appreciate the complexity of nature's food web. This appreciation is, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Karen McIntyre.
I think all the people who are here, sustainability number one, should stand up. And I think you should present them with a certificate because they now know a great deal about how Metro schools operate. A lot of them have already gone home because this was a really long, wonderful, informative meeting.
Thank you.
I'm a librarian and a storyteller, and I'm going to tell you a story. I love folk tales, and this is a Nazrudin story. It's from the Sufi tradition, and Nazrudin is kind of like coyote in Native American stories. Nazrudin's wife was preparing the evening meal. Nazrudin was practicing kamanja in the living room. A kamanja is kind of like a lute, only it uses a bow. And as he was practicing, it sounded sort of like this. And his wife came in and said, Nazrudin, why in the world, all the other men in the village practice kamanja all up and down the fretboard? They make beautiful notes. Why are you playing this one note? Nazrudin looked at her and said, those other men, they're all looking for this note. We'll be here every month to present the same note, maybe in a different octave, or maybe, maybe even a different variation. Tonight, we're talking about outdoor education for children, and each time we come, we present you with a document, which you'll get electronically tomorrow, and you can click on the links to see all the 147 studies that Dr. Hitt mentioned. What I want to say tonight is that, as I listened to all the wonderful presentations, I thought, we fit in there, and we fit in there, and we fit in there, but I don't have time to tell you where all those places are, nor had I thought about adding up all the money we save you. Nine hours a week of gardening from Ms. Dr. Hitt and his crew, nor all the wonderful benefits that we provide in terms of public support for the schools. This is something that was begun in the Westmead Garden. We had a waffles for Westmead, and people came, and Dr. Hitt took them through the gardens, and we had about 40 people who decided they wanted to start restoring wildlife in their yards. And I thought, gosh, we'll start a Facebook group. If we get 25 people, it'll be great. We have 476 people in this group after a year. It's an active group. They communicate all the time about how to do this, and they have a positive impression of our schools. I'm a huge supporter of public education, but we need your support because without it, it makes our jobs almost impossible, even though we continue to do them.
Thank you. Next is Lynn Woodward. Lynn? Next is, oh, past council member Charlie Tiger.
Please don't hold that against me.
I will not.
Chair Lady Elrod, my school board member, Abby Tyler, rest of the board, thank you for allowing me to be here. It's been 32 years since I've been here. The first time I came as a newly-elected council member, not understanding all the nuances, I came to tell Mr. Henson how to spend money more wisely. That didn't work too well. I come here tonight, though, as the grandparent of two current MMPS students, and a third one that's now a sophomore at Ohio State in pre-veterinary school. Talking about the tremendous education that my kids, grandkids are receiving. When you get to my age, I'm often asked questions like, what legislation did you sponsor that you're most proud of? Well, I had the opportunity to create the Greenway System in Nashville, which is unbelievable for a council member, looking back on that, because, you know, you all realize, most things happen in the mayor's office, but that was something the Metro Council did. They said, what was the most impactful legislation? Well, I was chosen to speak in 1993 in the Bredesen administration as the only speaker in favor of the controversial Bridgestone Arena, the Nashville Arena. What a difference our city is because of that, and the impact on tax revenues and whatnot. But today, I hear, I'm coming to tell you about the most important thing I've done in my political career, and that was the Bellevue Middle School Edible Learning Lab, modeled after the edible schoolyard in Berkeley, California, Alice Waters' vision and impact. Dr. Hargis had become Bellevue Middle School principal. Her first day was July 1, 2009, and we were on a plane going to Berkeley to visit that wonderful prototype garden. But I'm going to give you just one suggestion, and I was going to use the pun, I'm going to plant the seed with you, so maybe I'll throw that in. My experience having visited dozens of gardens and outdoor classrooms throughout Nashville in my political career, without the funding, if we as a community have decided that supplements to teachers to coach, to be a band teacher, to be a cheerleading sponsor, is important to our community, surely a supplement for a teacher in the school to be a garden manager or liaison to the community. You've seen dozens of instances of volunteers that are here, ready to make this happen, but where the lack is, is when teachers transfer, somebody will have an idea, they'll start a garden. Two years later, that teacher transfers, and the next thing you know, you have a weed pile there. If there was a supplement created, talk to your council members, let's get this done. It's there to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And last is Michelle Sheriff.
I won't play a video, although I apologize for interrupting earlier, but it was an MMPS celebration video that popped up on Instagram. Greetings, Chair Elrod, Vice Chair Player, the rest of the board, and Dr. Batt. As you know, I'm Michelle Sheriff and President of Metro Nashville Education Association. I'm not here speaking about sustainability, but I was at Bellevue with the garden, and at HG Hill, we had a sustainability program there as well. So we are pro-sustainability. On behalf of MNEA officers, Board of Directors, and our members, we want to congratulate our newly-elected board members. We look forward to working with you and continuing our relationship with existing board members. And welcome to our new student member, and welcome back, Ebenezer. It's good to see you back. We just want to recognize, first of all, the hard work of the district and celebrate with you with being an advancing district. We know last year was, we heard, harder than the previous year with COVID. So it was a lot of hard work from a lot of people, and we want to celebrate that with you. And just highlight a few things this year that we want to work on and partner with through our MOU committees, which the district is part of, we're a part of, and the board. And Compensation Committee, we want to work on the longevity pay for teachers, similar to what administrative pay has metro government, state employees have. Retention Committee focusing on ways to retain teachers, policies that will do that. One thing that has been a big issue this past year was the transfer process, so we want to work on improving that. We've already talked with HR about that, and I think we're in agreement on that. And then, you know, just keeping our teachers, experienced teachers, supporting our new teachers so that they stay within the district. One thing that we're hearing a lot of, and you've heard some talk of this before, is the COVID leave policy. And so we've heard, you know, that COVID is similar to other illnesses, that we want to align it with a student policy, but other illnesses do not have a mandatory isolation period as COVID does. And if students are out and have to do isolation, they're not in danger of loss of pay as teachers might be. So teachers get 10 sick leave days per year. That's two COVID isolation periods. So we want to make sure that teachers are not losing pay out of no fault of their own. And then the last thing is, we're still working on some teachers who haven't been paid or paid correctly, and so we're passing those over to HR. We know there's been some extenuating circumstances, but we would love to see a plan for how this will not happen in the future. And so we just stand ready to continue partnering and working with you all and the district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, too.
Thank you to everyone that provided public participation and signing up. If you have additional information that you would like to provide us, you're, of course, always welcome to email us. And if you are interested in participating in a future public participation, that is all on our board member website, which is mmps.org/boredofeducation, where you can find that information to sign up the Monday before that action. Next is going to be our consent agenda. So we have adopted the agenda as listed. Now may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I know the board has the consent agenda as listed.
Second.
Thank you. So the approval has been first and seconded. All in favor here on the board, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. All right. Lastly, we have committee reports. We had one committee meeting before this 5 o'clock meeting. That was at 4:30, and it was our capital needs meeting. Ms. Tyler, who is the chair of that, will you please give us a brief summary of what was said and done?
Yes, we just had a presentation on some of our properties that are not being utilized right now, and how we can best, the ideas of our group about how to best use these spaces that we have and their recommendations. No action was needed at that time, but it just wants to get it on everybody's radar.
Thank you. And those are all publicly available as well for the public viewing, or those in the audience. If you want additional information, of course, you could always reach out to us, but that information is also available, so you can see what those properties are if you're interested. information is also available, so you can see what those properties are if you're interested. All right. Now it's time for everyone's favorite point announcements. In the past, we have gone around in the U shape. I would like for us to start going by district number, so that would mean Dr. Gentry goes first, and then we'll skip over me as I'll go last, so it'll go from me and then on to District 3 to have a go.
All right. So thank you, Chair Elrod. I just want to again congratulate the entire district for the work. When Dr. Battle called to share the news, and we talked about it, and we talked about the journey specifically for District 1, that got us to where we are today, it did -- oh, Erin was crying. I wasn't crying. It was Erin. Erin cried. It wasn't me. But yeah, I cried before I got here. It was hard. It was some very tough decisions had to be made to get us where we are today, specifically, and selfishly speaking about District 1. And those of you who are here, you know, it wasn't pleasant. It was ugly. So I just want to thank everybody, the teachers, the staff, and just as Dr. Battle indicated, everyone who had a hand in pushing and pushing and pushing and being very clear about what success looked like, being uncompromising about what success looked like, being uncompromising about not letting certain student groups slide or get a pass, and not having to meet the same expectations. And so I personally want to thank you. I could literally go home right now and never come back. Like, literally, this could be the period on my career as a school board member. Honestly, it could, and I can't thank you all enough for that. I also want to just highlight my shirt again, in case anybody missed what it says. It says, "To all the ladies in the place..." Sorry, Ebenezer. I'm just kidding. Got you. Hold on. Give me a minute. All right. "To all the ladies in the place with style and grace." I ordered this shirt in anticipation of this board looking exactly the way it looks today. So I am excited to serve at least the next two years with you all, and this meeting is any indication of the attention, of the concern, of the engagement. We're in for some long meeting, but other than that, Dr. Battle, I think you have the team that you need. And I said this to you on election night, and I wasn't even in the country, but I said this to you on election night, that this is the time. This is it, right here. This is how we keep these schools who've exited priority status off of that list. This is how we keep making more reward schools. This is how every student, every teacher, every staff member is known. This is how we get PTOs in our schools. This is how we get the students the resources that they need, this board right here. Thank you.
Thank you. District 3.
Thank you. I just want to echo that congratulations to our new board members and to Elena, our new student board member. And I'm just, I'm excited to be working with everyone. I also want to say, I have a freshman in a freshman academy and can echo so much of what has said. It is so unique, and knowing that he is going to go through and that he's going to have repeat of the same teachers, and once he gets on a certain path, he's going to be with a lot of the same students. And I think, you know, in a school with 1,500 students, which is where he is, that's exciting for me as a parent to know that he's going to have sort of that experience. So I just want to throw that little personal note in about the academy's model, and it is, it's high school, it's all the high school things plus, 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 plus. So that's it.
District 4.
Hi, everyone. I'm so happy to be back on the board with you all for the next four years. I do want to publicly thank everyone who played a part in my election to the board. It took a whole community and a whole team to help get us there, and I am really honored, humbled, and grateful for everyone's part in that. Couple of announcements. It's been a busy month, so I do want to recognize Stanford Montessori. Their Beta Club had an installation and honor ceremony for their, their Beta Club, which are 4th grade students, did a buddy bench, and the buddy bench was to increase participation and friendship among students within the school. And so that was a very honorable project and very compassionate project for those 4th grade students. I wasn't able to participate today, but my son was also inducted into the Beta Club today, and they had their ceremony. So I missed it, but so happy for him and excited for all the children who will be participating this year. Second, congratulations to our two McGavick High School educators, Angela Allen and Laura Vignon, who were recognized at the Nashville Public Education Foundation Public Schools Hall of Fame Ceremony last week as inspiring educators for their work to improve college access for high school students. Secondly, I want to wish congratulations to all of our reward schools, all of our schools who came off a priority list, but a special recognition to my District 4 schools, which are Dodson Elementary and Strive Collegiate Academy as reward schools. And then lastly, I just want to welcome Elena Mitchell to our board as our new student board member, and I am excited to work with all of my new colleagues on the board. I think we're going to have a fantastic year. We have a lot of work to do, and I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you. District 5 to District 6.
So I also echo Dr. Berthina's sentiments. I'm excited to be back. I feel like I'm home. So I'm excited to be back working with some amazing individuals, and yes, it's going to be a great women-led board because we've got one of the best directors of school in the country, and we've got a fantastic board of education. So I'm excited to be back here. Just a few announcements. On Saturday, September 17, and this is for any student in metro schools who is interested in a U.S. Service Academy nomination, Congressional nomination, U.S. Service Academy Day will be held at the Downtown Public Library Saturday, September 17, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. You do not have to register in advance, but you do have to show up and, you know, kind of be there and participate. There will be Service Academy members from West Point, Air Force, Navy, all of the branches will be there for any student who is seeking a Congressional Academy nomination. Also, District 6's first community meeting will be held on next Tuesday at 6:30 p.m. at September 20. We will be at the Southeast Library in the large community room, and these will be monthly meetings that will be held between board meetings, so please come out to that. Some great news for our Antioch High School athletic program. MAPCO at 3,800 Murfreesboro Road just opened this past week, and as a way of giving back to the community, they are dedicating two pumps to our Antioch High School athletic program. And basically, what that means is if you purchase your gas from one of these two pumps, 25 cents per gallon will be donated to the Antioch High School athletic program. So go to the MAPCO at 3,800 Murfreesboro Road and look for the pumps, and just because I've been there twice already, it's pump 15 and 16. So, and that way, our schools get that support. And finally, J.E. Moss is holding their College and Career Week the week of September 26, and also, their multicultural festival will be October 6 from 5:30 to 7:00. And a big congratulations to both Lakeview Elementary and J.E. Moss Elementary for being on the rewards list. I'm a proud District 6 representative. I love all my schools, and we're going to just kick it. It's going to just go out of the park. So congratulations to every single one of our reward schools. You've done a fantastic job. Thank you.
You, District 7.
I just want to just recognize that 9/11 has passed. I was in Washington, D.C. when that happened. I'm in grad school, so that's a very special, not special, particular time, yes, as being that and what it did to our country that we don't forget, this, what happened, and just want to take a time to recognize that moment. Also, give my condolences to my FISC family and to the Nashville community for Dr. Paul and Kwame's passing. This is the second time that someone that's literally part of the soundtrack of my FISC career has passed away. He's a former church member also, and what he's done for the impact for the FISC community and for the Nashville and the country with the FISC Jubilee Singers and the legacy that he's had over the last 30 years. So I want to recognize that. Congratulations to Glendale and Woodset Elementary Schools in my district for becoming reward schools, so very proud about that. Also, Hispanic Heritage Month starts this week, so Plaza Mariachi and Casa's friends in my district. And so just to the Hispanic community, we just congratulate you and celebrate the upcoming month that's coming this way. And then also, when I first got appointed to the board, it was the first time we became an all-female body with Dr. Battle, and then now, this is the first duly-elected school board, or women's school board. So I think it's something that we should mark this occasion, that all of us have been duly-elected by the people of Nashville-Davison County, and I'm expecting wonderful, great things from this. And then also, just want to congratulate and give a good job to Dr. Battle. She has been a wonderful leader and really promoted all the teachers and principals and executive principals about we're making reward status, but that doesn't happen with a great leader. And I think we need to take this time to really acknowledge, in these three short years, I think we came on a board maybe literally months apart, and that what you have done in the midst of a pandemic, in the midst of national disasters, economic downturns, and back up, that what your leadership has done in your short tenure to make the record progress and reward schools and taking on, should not go unnoticed, unrecognized, and that it takes a great leader to do that. And I know you're going to uplift your team, and they deserve to do that, but you also personally deserve kudos because you have gone through some personal hell also to get here, but it has not gone unnoticed, and we are so glad that you are a leader here and that we're going to have you hopefully for a very long time. If I have anything to do with it, money will not be an issue. If I can say anything else about it, but I just want to make sure that you get the kudos for your leadership, for what you have done to get us to the record reward status that we have and to get us out of the priority schools, the limited amount of priority schools that we have due to that stupid lack of threshold thing, but that's another thing. But thank you for your service.
District 8.
I was prepared to clap there. I was expecting a clap, but I didn't hear one, and then I figured I would just go ahead and do it. So this is obviously being my very first board meeting. As a board member, thrilled to be here, super excited. Want to thank, as Dr. B. did, everyone who helped support our campaign and effort to get here, especially my family. But also, I just want to say how thrilled I am to be. The number of times we've talked about this board and the women and women-led, but also, I've just been very impressed with the kinds of questions and attention that I've heard everyone give tonight, so much so that I had to stay really quieter than I wanted to, didn't ask as many questions I wanted to, so everyone can expect to hear more questions from me and hopefully won't get Sharon, you know, too much longer on meetings. But I'm thrilled to be here and be part of this. And I also want to just give a quick shout-out to the woman who used to occupy this seat, Jeanie Pupawalker, for the excellent job that she did and her mentorship as I take on this role. So quick announcements. Waverly-Balmatt had a choir performance today on the steps of the City Hall, is that correct? As part of the Music Makes Us performance. And if you don't know her, the music teacher there, her name is Alice Wally. She is a fantastic human being and an amazing teacher who has done an incredible job, won multiple awards, and so really excited for them and that performance that occurred today. Thrilled to be sharing board seats with a student from a high school that is represented by District 8, Elena, so glad to have you here, and the two of us can, as the newest people on this board, hopefully hold each other up. And want to, just as everyone else has, congratulate the reward schools in District 8. Aiken Elementary, Glendale Elementary, J.T. Moore Middle, where my kids go, Julia Green, Percy Priest, Sylvan Park, and West End. Super proud of all of those schools, and it was great to see all the principals here tonight. I will also be holding District 8 community meetings monthly, same date and time, so we'll probably be doing similar things here. So next week, September 20, hopefully at the Green Hills Library, and I'll put more information about that online. So thrilled to be here. Thanks, everybody, for your support getting here.
Thank you. District 9.
I also want to congratulate our reward schools, specifically for District 9, Harpeth Valley Elementary and Charlotte Park Elementary and Early College High School. So I'm very proud of them and all of our reward schools and all of our schools that are continuing to move forward, period. So very, very proud of all of our schools as they've slogged through these last several years. Yeah. I will also be available for a community meeting this Saturday, September 17, at 10:00 a.m. Councilwoman Gloria Hauser is having a meeting for District 22 that I will be presenting at. If you would like to come and learn a little bit more about MMPS schools, I'll be there and happy to answer any questions and interact with anybody who comes. It'll be at the Ford Ice Center at 10:00 a.m. on September 17, this Saturday. So I will also make sure that that's available online. Thank you.
Berthina, you had it in?
Absolutely. Then we will do our students. So Ebenezer, if you will go, please, and then Ms. Elena.
Thank you. I just want to start off by, again, congratulating the 44 reward schools that were congratulated today with us, especially very special to me because I saw all three of my schools here from elementary to high school. And it's a really incredible, like, feeling to see my old middle school principal, who I haven't seen in almost five years, come up to me, give me a hug, and I have the chance to, you know, dap him up and everything, and it's just a really, really, really nice feeling. I also want to congratulate and welcome Elena for joining us on the board. She's going to be here for the next two years. She's going to be taking up my spot next year, too, and it's very nice to see someone who's a good representation of what the district can offer. And then lastly, I just want to bring up the fact that the district offered ACT is coming up for seniors in the beginning of October, so it's all seniors, you know, get to study. This is a very, very incredible chance to take the ACT for free and at school, and it's something that we should all be using. Thank you.
And Elena.
Okay. Hi. I want to firstly thank everyone for welcoming me. This has been a very fun meeting. So yeah, just want to say firstly, thank you guys for having me, and I'm very excited for what the future holds. I also want to congratulate all the reward schools. Shout-out to Robert Churchwell for their priority school exit, because that is my elementary school. And then lastly, I just want to highlight that it is fall sports, so go and support your MMPS athletes, and not just the football team, but also girls volleyball, girls soccer, cross-country, golf, cheerleaders. We don't compete, but we are a sport. And yes, just go support. And our elementary school, they have soccer and cross-country and all those things, too. So support our students. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Berthina.
Yeah, a couple of things I forgot to mention. Yesterday, I attended the College and Career Fair that was held at the Southeast Community Center. It was a great event hosted by our Counseling Department, and so it was a great experience for the many of students that were participating in that event, and it was great turnout. And so I really appreciate that the district is doing it and providing that opportunity for students across our community. And then the last thing is, I want to give a shout-out to Renita Perry and Sharika Roby Grant. I was able to attend the Tennessee Charter Commission hearings on, last week sometime, both days. Yeah, Thursday, no, Tuesday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Wednesday, Thursday, some days next week, last week. But it was a great example. I recommend that all of our board members take an opportunity to go to those hearings, to see what occurs in those hearings. I will say that Sharika Roby Grant and Renita Perry were rock stars in representing our district and representing the facts for our district in those charter school hearings. So it's really important that each one of you take a moment to attend those hearings so that you can get better clarity of what happens at those events as we make decisions on our board and future decisions going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. For District 2, we have a number of reward schools, including Cole Elementary, Creve Hall Elementary, Granbury Elementary, and Shane. But it should also be mentioned that McMurray Middle School, Tashaka Kaverson, Dr. Tashaka But it should also be mentioned that McMurray Middle School, Tashaka Koverson, Dr. Tashaka Koverson and his teams deserve additional recognition for leaving the priority list. When I first joined the board, they were first on that priority list, so it is quite a turn of events, and I'm exceptionally proud of all the work that's been done by his teams and, of course, those students. This week has been a busy week for all of us on the board. Not only are a lot of us coming accustomed to being on the board, maybe, for some of our new members, but we've also had a lot of events to support the reward schools, but also we have some additional ones coming up. And I had one yesterday with Coke Consolidation and their bottling company. They supported some of our schools with the All Kids Bike Initiative, where they provided bikes at five schools. So I appreciate Park Avenue hosting us for that. It was quite a turnout, and those kindergartners, y'all. I mean, there's one thing you should know about me. It is, I am talking to some kindergartners if they're there. And they were so well behaved and so incredible, and I really appreciate Park Avenue hosting us. And it was always exciting to be at Cole for theirs as well. On Thursday, I will be at Tuscaloosa. Big announcement, they were chosen as one of the schools across the nation to celebrate Little Kids Rock. And while I am there, I'll be sure to see their librarian at Caitlin Genigan, who was recently elected to serve as the president of TASSL, which is the Tennessee Association of School Librarians. So that's an exceptional thing for her to be. We are lucky at MMPS that we've had a number of our librarians become the president of TASSL, and that is, I think, to speak to the level of employees that we have and their expertise and their passion for their students and for their level of commitment to the positions that they hold. It's also, as you might likely know by the most recent legislation from last year, an increasingly important position for us to have within MMPS, and I am grateful for their commitment to not only literacy, but our students and our state in general. And then lastly, colleagues, I appreciate your votes of confidence, and it is, I am deeply touched and honored by it. I will be emailing you, please start checking your MMPS email addresses. We will be emailing you this week, by Friday, information about committees and other things, so please be advised on that. Otherwise, we will have some future conversations about retreats. Please be aware that the first meeting of October was canceled previously, and so the first meeting in October, because it overlaps with fall break, will not be happening. So be advised of that, and it will be changed on our schedule, on our MMPS, again, at mmps.org/boredofeducation, maybe another backslash calendar. That information will be updated tomorrow, and so that will be all updated for everyone as well. Don't forget, you can find agendas and contact information there if you have additional information you want to send to us because you were not able to stay for public participation, and I appreciate your patience with us. Other than that, be there in further business. This meeting is adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information on this and other programs, visit nashville.gov.